Thank you, Hazel, everybody. The next item is the agenda for our board.
Motion we approve of agenda.
Second.
The motion is second, need discussion? Hearing none, a call question, all in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Consider and or to approve. And as he's, as he's walking in here, Hazel, would you read the proclamation?
Resolution honoring World War II veteran John Thomas Hill. Whereas Rutherford County Navy John Thomas Hill entered the U.S. Navy on September 19th, 1946. And whereas John Thomas Hill was awarded the American Theodore Medal, the Asia Pacific Medal, and the Victory Medal for his World War II service. And whereas John Thomas Hill returned to Rutherford County after the end of his U.S. Navy service and has continued to live in his native county throughout his life. And whereas John Thomas Hill will celebrate his 100th birthday on April 17th, 2025, in his native Rutherford County. Therefore be it proclaimed that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners wish to honor John Thomas Hill's military service on his centenary birthday by declaring April 17th, 2025, as John Thomas Hill Day in Rutherford County. Be it also proclaimed by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the entire community hereby should offer its admiration, congratulations, and very best wishes to John, John Thomas Hill on his 100th birthday. Approve this the 7th day of April, 2025.
Board of Commissioners. We're gonna stand behind her for a photo op. Mr. Commissioner.
All nations, Israel. Thank you for your service.
Well, we had the resolution, commissioners. What was the award?
There you go. So it's space. There you go.
Motion is second, all approve, say aye.
Aye.
The kids look all happy. There you go.
Raise your middle eyes!
Amen.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Commissioners, the next item is item 4107. This is proclamation for line workers appreciation day. I have a few guests that are getting ready to walk in here. Gentlemen, come in, line up up front here. All of you guys, all right, yeah. I don't know if you guys have power at your house right now. But when we didn't, these teams are the ones that came to our aid. And would you go from one side to the end or the other and identify who you are and which entity you're with? Let's give them a round of applause. As I say, the price is right, we're not sure yet. Hazel, has a proclamation. Hazel.
Line worker appreciation day. Whereas on April 10th, 2013, a resolution was passed in the United States Senate to recognize April 18th annually as National Lineman Line Worker Appreciation Day. And whereas the profession of the electrical line worker is steeped in personal, family, and professional tradition. And whereas line workers are often first responders during storms and other catastrophic events, working to make the scene safe for other public safety officials and to expedite the return of vital electrical power to our communities. And whereas these brave men and women work with thousands of votes of electricity high atop power lines 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, risking, risking and sometimes losing their lives to keep electricity flowing. And whereas line workers are often faced with dangerous conditions far from their families as they work to construct and maintain energy infrastructure throughout the state of North Carolina and the United States. And whereas line workers must use their technical knowledge, physical strength, and ingenuity to achieve success in challenges they face every day. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners thanks these skilled and heroic line workers who brave hurricanes, ice storms, snowstorms, floods, and other natural disasters to maintain our communities' energy grid. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Ryan A. King, Chairman of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners and the Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 18th, 2025, as Line Worker Appreciation Day in Rutherford County. This the 7th day of April, 2025.
Commissioners, the resolution's for you. I'm making a motion, please approve the proclamation. The motion is second, you've got a second. Any discussion, hearing none, a call question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it is done. Thank you, gentlemen. Commissioners, next item's 4103. This is regarding economic development. This is a public hearing, a public hearing on something called Project Cold. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on Project Cold. I'd like to recognize our Economic Development Director, Burgett.
Good evening, Commissioners. Those were two extremely difficult items to follow, and I hope I live up to half that height. But I'm pleased to stand before you this evening and bring to you yet another project for Rutherford County. The excitement behind this is the fact that it means great things are happening here in our community. Economic Development Office has been working with the company codename Project Cold for the last several months. This company is considering setting up operations in Forest City, and the proposal includes 88 new jobs, and that would be in the first three years with an average salary of $50,411. And along with that would come an investment of $6,450,000. This evening, the board is being asked to consider a resolution to confirm your support for this project through a local industrial grant equal to 50% of the equal, of the personal property taxes. This would extend for up to five years, provided that jobs, investment, and wage levels are met and maintained. Tonight's public hearing aims to gather public input on the matter before your vote.
Thank you. Regarding this public hearing and this project cold, are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners? To Burgett this time.
This is going into Minnesota Forest City?
Yes, it is.
Any comments or questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
This is a public hearing on Project Cold, our item number 4103. At this time, is there a member of the public that would like to speak regarding this matter, Project Cold? We have an economic development opportunity for our county and for our community, Project Cold. We have this public hearing happening right now, and purpose right now is there's a member of the public that would like to speak regarding Project Cold. To satisfy my attorney, I'm saying this three times. Regarding Project Cold, is there a member of the public that would like to speak regarding that? Seeing none, hearing none, I will now close public hearing. Commissioners, before you, is there a recommended motion and a resolution? So this time, I'll look for the will of the board.
Motion we approve the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second, need discussion? Hearing none, a call question, all in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed, likewise, carries. Thank you, thank you, Burgett. Commissioners, next item on our agenda is public comments. Sorry, I'm on the wrong page here. We do have a stack of people, we're welcome to speak. You have three minutes to speak on the matter of your concern. I will attempt to pronounce your name, if I can read it, if not, I'll read the last four digits of your telephone number so they can identify. We do have folks in this room and two other locations, so there will, there may be a slight pause as we wait for that person to come, but it'll come to the podium here. You'll have three minutes. Generally, we do not engage because we're receiving information. If you haven't had any kind of documentation, or papers, or handouts, or anything, if you would just leave it on the table up here, do not bring it to the dais, and our clerk will be sure that we receive it sometime after the meeting. And the first person, it's, it's in certain words, is what was given to me by Deborah, Alexandra Langley, from Rutherford County, 4435. We do have our rules that cheering and booing and that, you know, may inhibit another person with opposing view from speaking, so it asks if we could just keep this in a businesslike manner, certainly to appreciate that.
Hello, good evening. Commissioners, our schools are the heart of our community, and it's timely invest in our future. Today, I'm here to share how increased funding can profoundly impact our schools with examples from my personal experience. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Alexandra Langley, and I stand before you as a committed advocate for the well-being of our children and the future of our community. So I'll speak with you candidly now. I moved here from Florida about three and a half years ago. I, I visited the area, visiting my in-laws over the last few years, fell in love with it here and decided this is where I wanted my forever home to be. So my family and I uprooted from Florida and moved here. Now, the reason why I'm here today to talk about increased school funding is because one issue at hand is having a school resource officer on site at all of our schools in Rutherford County. And the reason why I'm so passionate about that is because I was personally affected by the Marjory Stoneman Douglas mass shooting that occurred on Valentine's Day so many years ago. That was my community, and I can tell you, that is a shadow that will never go away on a community. It will forever be tainted. I would take my daughters to go play at the local playground, and it was named after one of the victims at Marjory Stoneman Douglas. We would drive past the high school, and there would be the purple ribbons in honor every single one of those students. So I can tell you here, right now, that that is something we do not want to affect this community and especially our innocent children. Sorry, I got very passionate about that, and I got away from my, my notes here. Another thing I do want to note is, I want to shine a spotlight on the unsung heroes of our school, the teachers and staff who will go, who go above and beyond every single day. Just this morning, when I dropped my children off at the car line, there they all were, all of the teachers in a row, pouring down rain. They had their umbrellas, getting my kids safely out of the car. The guidance counselor who taught my daughter certain strategies for dealing with her anger. The principal, who when I messaged her one day, immediately sent me back a reply allowing me to meet with her to talk about school safety. So, what, how I want to end today, with what I have to say to all of you is, whenever you are approached or given the opportunity to increase funding for our schools, I hope you always vote yes. Because when we invest in safety, education, and the well-being of our students, we are investing in a brighter and stronger future for our entire community. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Connor Hensley, that is, the number I can't read right with the handwriting, is 1799, looks like the telephone number. Connor, lives in Connor Road. Go one once. Connor Hensley. It's hard to read the handwriting on the slide, well, it's not that clear. Connor, what's your last name?
Hensley.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, you have three minutes.
So, good to be standing before you this evening, come to you about the school budget. As a 2022 graduate of Chase High School, I was involved in many extracurricular activities, baseball, football, carpentry, agriculture. I've now taken a job with the Rutherford County Building Inspections Department, and the carpentry class with Mr. Joey Allen is where I developed many of my skills that I use in my job today. As a sibling of three, my older brother's already graduated, I have two younger brothers that, or a younger brother and younger sister that are coming up through the school system. I fully believe that they should have every opportunity that I had, as well as the safety, to walk in the school every day and know that they're learning, their education, and that their sporting events are going to be as safe as possible. This is a desperate plea to fully fund our school system, as this is the future of our county.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Courtney Hauser, 5624. Courtney? Or Hauser? H-O-U-S-E.
It's Hauser.
An R. Here comes somebody. Hello, Courtney. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Courtney Hauser, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Rutherford County School System. I am a Rutherford County native, I'm a Chase High School graduate, I'm also a mom of four. Two of my children have already graduated from Chase High School, where they were involved in agriculture, carpentry, carpentry classes, FCA, they played football and baseball. Both of these boys are now Rutherford County employees. I also currently have a child at Chase Middle School and one at Chase High School. Both of these kids also play sports, they enjoy taking elective classes such as agriculture and chorus, they excel in honors classes, they take college classes, have received New Century Scholars Awards. My 14-year-old is a very quiet child, he is a freshman at Chase this year. He has started taking agriculture classes, that's where he became part of the tool identification team, poultry judging, he's on the high school golf team, and he has really come out of his shell, and this has been very important for our family, and it's taken these classes that I think's helped him. I truly believe that sports and many of our elective classes are what help our students enjoy the day-to-day tasks of school, and I believe that budget cuts may have a negative effect on these. And I also know that many of our students don't have the best home life, and sports and elective classes are where many of them find their outlets, as well as their taught valuable lessons about life that they may not get at home. And my kids, at this point, always want to call Rutherford County home, and our students are the future of our county. If we don't invest in them, we are hurting ourselves. I'm also a local realtor here, and as many of you know, we have many people moving in here every day, and the majority of these have children, the number one question we get is, what are your public schools like? Many of them have research, Thomas Jefferson, they already know about that, but the majority do want public schools. I have always been a huge supporter of our school system, I share feedback with them for myself personally, I tell them feedback from my kids, I have friends and family who are administrators, teachers, in financing, and so this is very important. If we cut funding and we can't get budget funding from y'all, it's probably going to cause a lot of these people not to move here, and we're going to see people moving out, which is going to affect our county more than just the school system. Because when they leave or don't come, their paychecks are gone too, and so is our county tax money. So tonight, as a citizen, a mom, a realtor, and a taxpayer myself, I'm asking all of you to please really consider the future of our children, the future of our county, and please help with the funding that our county schools need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerica Bailey? Jerica Bailey, Cliffside Elementary? Ms. Bailey? Yeah, welcome. Please step up. You have three minutes, and welcome.
Good afternoon, my name's Jerica Bailey. Me and my husband on a farm here in Rutherford County. We are a run-in, work-in cattle operation, and we do have two kids who are in Rutherford County schools. And I'm just here tonight to say that we support Rutherford County schools. We support, Cliffside is where our kids go. We always give back, feedback to the school, and we do do a lot of things with our farm as far, as far as field trips go. We do have several field trips from Cliffside, we also go to Chase Middle School, and we also have East High School, we have a self-contained class that will be coming out. So we do give a lot of our time, a lot of our energy to agriculture, education, and also to Rutherford County schools. And we just do not want funding and budget cuts to affect these programs and these things. So as taxpayers, as farm owners, we do expect our money to be going to funding the Rutherford County schools, and especially in the agriculture department. And that's it.
Thank you so much. Yes, it's Keisha Kirby. Spindell Elementary. Kirby, last digit, 0310. Yes. Ms. Kirby, well, you're, welcome, welcome. You have three minutes, and you ready to go?
Okay. Okay, my name is Kaisha Kirby, and today I'm speaking on behalf of Spindell Elementary. My purpose for this meeting tonight with you all is to represent the school system and school board funding for the schools, and I want to assure that the county supports our children and teachers by fulfilling the Rutherford County School Board funding requests for the upcoming school years. And I would also like to ask that you continue to support the funding for the schools, for the children, so that they can have access to the technology and resources they need to thrive. The Commissioner investing in their education today ensures they're prepared to contribute to society tomorrow, and your continued commitment will make a lasting lifetime of difference in the children's lives to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Appreciate it. Tina Carr, C-A-R-R. Tina Carr? Sorry, I was looking down. Ms. Carr, welcome, you have three minutes, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm from, I moved here in 2022, I'm from St. Louis, Missouri, and I found out tonight that this works a little differently than we do there. We're, we ask a question, and then you guys talk back. My understanding is, I ask a question, that's it. Okay. I did, fortunately, was to talk to a gentleman earlier today to get me some information, but I'm representing about 175 families, most of those that have disabled veterans, senior disabled veterans, who are wondering, this was brought to my attention about a month ago, the private property debris removal being handled by the Army Corps of Engineers. We understand that Chimney Rock and Lake Lure, they are in this program currently, and the citizens are wondering why are not all the others, cities in Rutherford County, able to take advantage of this? They have thousands of pounds of trees along driveways near their homes, and so the question is just why, but I don't think I can get an answer to that question tonight after finding out what I did. So, basically, I did find out that it is in the works, that you guys are working on it. My next question, which probably, I don't know if I can get an answer on this one or not, but how to find out progress on this. And that's, so basically, I just wanted to, we wanted to bring attention to the fact that there are a lot of families out there that desperately need this, they do not have the funds, nor the physical capabilities to move a 4,000-pound tree. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, the next public comment is from a Thomas Turner, Ellerboro. Thomas.
Good evening. Our country is considered by many to be a representative democracy. In order for a representative democracy to function and not lapse into disorder and chaos, and into self-absorption, and to flourish, it depends wholly on an educated and virtuous citizenry. And this cannot be done without proper formation of mind, body, and character, without the appearing of necessary and fitting means of provision, this formation. Further, what makes us uniquely and definitively human is not simply the ability to make fire or walk upright, but the ability to know and understand what is true, and to act freely from a place of understanding what is true and good, in service of neighbor and self. This does not happen by chance, but through consistent and loving formation and intervention in ways which directly and intentionally respond to the unique gifts and personality each student has, in its particularity, and which they may contribute for our local and national polity. Our mission statement in Rutherford County schools is to prepare all students for lifelong learning in a global community by partnering with families and communities to promote a safe, nurturing school environment, and provide rigorous and academic- a safe, nurturing school environment and provide rigorous and academic and career preparation experiences. Investment in this mission is not investment in ivory tower. It has immediate, embodied, and direct influence on family and present and future community flourishing. Formation, which responds to students and their individuality of gifts and interests, has immediate, embodied, and direct influence on their peers, eventual workplace, and life, and this formation cannot be recovered and lost. The mentorship of various forms that takes place within these contexts is a source of priceless and irreplaceable good. And so I submit this to your consideration, that this mission is worth investing in. Thank you for your time and what you do.
Jennifer, I see you. Welcome. You have three minutes, and you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Marian Wright Edelman, founder and president of the Children's Defense Fund, once stated, "Education is for improving the lives of others and for leaving your community and world better than you found it." My name is Jennifer Robertson, and I'm here this evening as a member of the community, as a parent of a child in this school district, and as a proud teacher of children with exceptional needs. This position is indeed a calling for me, and it is not just a job. I am passionate about what I do, and I deeply love the children I serve. Our students today require much more than students of recent years. Not only do we serve as their teacher, we also serve as their mentor, social worker, counselor, cheerleader, and in some cases, as their provider. While we also work to provide a stable, nurturing environment for them, we help to meet their needs, including in some circumstances by providing clothing, shoes, and coats. But above all, we work to be sure that their needs are met. We desperately need more funding in this district so that we can continue to passionately serve our students. 15.2% of households in Rutherford County live below the poverty line, according to the North Carolina Rural Center. With a quick glance of the salary schedule for teachers in this county, it is obvious that many of our own teachers also live below the poverty line. So think about that for a moment. Every month, many of us squeeze from our personal budgets to help our students with the essentials they need. It is not uncommon for us to serve children that have been living in a car or have to sleep on a couch or reside in a foster home. It is not uncommon for us to serve children that rely on two meals a day at school so they are fed. In some schools in our district, many requests for exceptional children services are coming from the parents. They're recognizing that they need more help and are relying on more resources from Rutherford County schools in order to support their children. These services are not optional. They're indeed mandated according to the federal law, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. These services must be provided regardless. Our future children and grandchildren deserve the very best education that Rutherford County has to offer. Our school district needs your support in providing necessary funding so we can continue making a difference-
Thank you, ma'am. Your time's up.
-in the lives of our students. Thank you.
Is it Rochelle West from Bostick?
Good evening, Commissioners, community members, and educators. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Rochelle West, and I come before you not only as a parent, but also as someone who has experienced firsthand the power of education, both in overcoming personal challenges and in seeing how education shaped my own children. In 1984, I was in my first year of second grade. Yes, my first year. I struggled with reading, and at that time, there were no standardized tests or IEPs to help identify disabilities the way we have now. I was far behind, and it was suggested that I repeat the grade. My mother agreed, and as a result, I was separated from my friends. I was bullied, humiliated, and made to feel like I didn't belong. This created a sense of hopelessness that led me to drop out at the age of 16. But my story did not end. When I became a mother at 19, I decided I wanted something more for myself and my children. I returned to school, earned a high school diploma, and later pursued a degree in manufacturing technology. Today, I'm a maintenance planner superintendent and continuing my education in business administration. While I was able to turn my life around, it did not have to be this difficult. Years later, my daughter entered second grade at Sunshine Elementary. I saw the same struggles in her that I had faced. After working closely with the teachers and having her tested, we discovered that she needed additional support. She was placed with an IEP. By the end of the second-grade year, there was the questions about whether to move her to third grade. I panicked. All of the hopeless feelings that I had experienced at her age rushed back, and I feared she would be faced with the same challenges as I did. But the teachers at Sunshine didn't give up on her. They provided her the time, attention, and one-on-one support she needed. They believed in her, and she was promoted to third grade. By the end of fifth grade, she was a straight A student, excelling academically, and became a role model for her peers. Today, she is in eighth grade at East Middle, taking ninth-grade classes, maintaining straight As's, excelling in sports like soccer, volleyball, and track. This success is a direct result of the unwavering dedication of her teachers. Educators not only taught her how to read, but they taught her how to believe in herself. What made the difference was the resources and the support. Teachers who had the time and ability to focus on each child. We cannot fail them. Fully funding Rutherford County schools is not a luxury, it is a necessity. Our children's future depend on it, our community's future depends on it, and I know firsthand what it means to fall behind, and I also know what it means to have a second chance. Let's ensure that no children in Rutherford County has to wait for that second chance. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jarrett Guffey. Pronounced it correctly. Yes, sir. Hello, welcome. Sir, you have three minutes, and I'm ready when you are.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jarrett Guffey, and I would like to speak about the rail-to-trail extension and the Rutherford County school budget. On the first topic, I'll be speaking mainly to Commissioner Ben Field and Commissioner Hawke. I, like many others who this proposed trail will affect, are immeasurably against it. The proposed trail will continue in your districts and the majority of the community. Those who elected you to be our voice do not need it and do not want it. I understand that in the town and the cities, the current trail has a use with shops, businesses, restaurants, and open areas that are around the general public. But on the new section, there's no economical gain for the communities which it passes through, only private property. After it's complete, who's going to pay for the yearly maintenance on the trail that it'll need? Who will pay for the cleanup of the trash and the needles? The county, that's who diverting already stretched resources and assets. Who's going to make sure that the trail is safe? The Sheriff's Department? There are not enough officers in the department to effectively, safely, or remotely make that happen, and none of you can guarantee it. Via public records request, there have been approximately 670 calls for service in four years. That is a call for service every two and a half days. Now, some of those calls are also medical and welfare-related, but the vast majority are law enforcement-related. These are private properties. These are generations of landowners who don't want to worry about their children playing outside, going on vacation, a late night at the ballfield, homelessness, and transient people coming onto their property, their home is being broken into, and the sanctity of their home taken away from them. I venture to say that neither of you or any of you are affected by the current trail or the proposed trail. I know Foothills Regional Commission has started this process, but the Commissioners have the ability to end it. As for the school, Commissioners, the way the state has the teacher's salary schedule is horrid. From years 15 to 25, teachers receive no pay raise and their salary stays the same, no matter what degree they have. That's why the local supplement is so important, but in that, it's only $1,100 a year, split into two paychecks and then taxed. Over the past 10 years, the taxes and cost of living has risen, and the local supplements have stayed the same, never increasing. On the financial side, the teachers are bringing home less now than they were years ago, and given this, they still remain in Rutherford County and still want to be here. To those concerned with the education standards and books in the library that children read, North Carolina has Senate Bill 49, which is the Parental Bill of Rights, which allows you to access all of the educational materials and books available in the school. Middle and high schools have full coverage with school resource officers, while elementary schools do not. There are multiple officers covering multiple elementary schools during the day, leaving those schools vulnerable to issues that may arise. Why is this even a discussion? You are the body and the means to resolve the issue, and if not, it's not when something happened, it's when, and let's hope it's not due to indecision.
Thank you, sir. Really appreciate you, John. Commissioners, we have another public comment speaker, Julie Pittman from Rutherford County. Hello, Ms. Pittman.
Good evening. My name is Julie Pittman. I am the 2018 RS Central Rutherford County Schools and Western Region Teacher of the Year, a former teacher advisor for the State Superintendent for North Carolina Public Instruction, and the proud parent of two RS Central Hilltoppers. I have spent the last six years working and advocating for schools across the state for the schools, teachers, and students. I chose to come back to Rutherford County Schools, to my home school, just two short months ago, to teach students in my community, in our community. And now I stand here advocating for these schools and our county and our school system. I could give you any number of reasons why I think funding our local public school system is the right thing to do, but I want to read a statement by my former student and current friend, who's in the back of the room, Jessie Whiteside, who was too nervous to speak for herself. She's the owner of South and Main Salon in Rutherford County. So here is her letter. My name is Jessie Whiteside. My child, Kobe Whiteside, has battled with severe health issues since the age of five. After his first diagnosis of leukemia, we chose to put him in Trinity School because it was small and we were nervous about a big school. Rutherford County Schools rallied around our family at that time and helped support my child Kobe, but also his younger sister Cora, who was basically raised in the hospital with Kobe. RS Central did not forget that my husband and I were proud Hilltoppers, and they stood by us even after we had started our family and our own business, and even after we put our kid in a different school. After Kobe's second relapse eight years ago, I am proud to say he is cancer-free and in full remission. His health issues have affected his physical growth, but not his spirit. And he's right back there in the cowboy hat. Last year, Kobe told me he wanted to go to RS Central. Both his daddy and I were proud that he wanted to go to our school. We believed in these county schools, but we were nervous how Kobe would do at a big school with kids much bigger than him. But Kobe was determined. He wanted to be a part of building that house in the front yard of that school, to learn about electrical trades and carpentry. He wanted to be a part of that big school community. He may be little in size, but he has big dreams, and RS Central is making them come true. Not only is he excelling in his trades courses, he has become OSHA-certified this year as a freshman, and he is making straight As in all of his classes. This is due to the fact that class sizes are not big at RS Central. His teachers are able to really deliver to all the students. Funding for our Rutherford County Schools is essential to help kids like my Kobe know that they have a place where they can learn and grow in this community. Without RS Central High School, I know that my boy would not be where he is right now. I know his daddy and I would not be either, nor his sister. Please vote to fully fund Rutherford County Schools for Kobe and all the kids like him who depend on these schools. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Excellent.
My name is Melissa Metcalf, and I'm proud to serve in several capacities in our community. I'm currently a member of the Local Advisory Council for Forest City Dunbar, president of our PTO, and a dedicated volunteer in our school. I have two children who are enrolled in Rutherford County School System, and I'm deeply invested in their education and future. As a volunteer, I spend a lot of time in our schools, and what I'm seeing right now is concerning. There is a growing sense of low morale among our teachers. The budget shortfall is creating a climate of uncertainty for them, leaving them unsure of what the next school year will look like. This uncertainty is not only affecting their ability to teach, but it's also impacting students who depend on them for guidance and support. Our PTO works tirelessly to raise money for our teachers and students, but it's clear that this alone cannot solve the larger issue at hand. While we're doing what we can, the reality is that the county needs to invest more in education in the people who are shaping the future of our children. As a parent, I want to ensure that my children receive the best education possible. They will be in Rutherford County Schools for many years to come, and I believe that investing in our schools today will create a brighter tomorrow for all of us. Forcing the closure and sale of any of the elementary schools in this county would add to already crowded classrooms and even longer bus routes, further disrupting the learning environment. This will only make it more difficult for our students and teachers to succeed. So my question is this: How can we, as taxpayers, be told that the money we've all contributed will not be used to invest in the future of this county? Our communities deserves more, our children deserve more, and our teachers deserve more. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson? Well, actually, there's two of them.
My name is Bryson Thompson, and I'm a freshman at RS Central High School. Rutherford County Schools offer a lot of different electives and trades and career options to get prepared for our future. These types of jobs that we learn in our Rutherford County Schools help us figure out what we want to do when we grow up and get a job. A lot of classes in our other schools, kids just sit and look at computers or worksheets. But Rutherford County Schools offer things that give students hands-on experiences. In my carpentry class, we learned skills to help us build houses. My teacher, Mr. Vaughn, is a strict father figure who teaches great things about carpentry and also how to rack throughout the real world. Things I learned in this class are helping me and my dad build our own family house. In my food class, we learned a lot about how kids in our school don't have a lot of food security, and we are learning how to cook for ourselves, and it sometimes gives some kids another place to eat food and take it home straight from the classroom. A lot of my friends are taking a public safety course and learning all different pathways that our community needs, but a lot of our teachers are depending on their own knowledge and their own wallets to teach us. Even our math, science, and English teachers are using their own funds to make learning mean something for us students, and it shouldn't be that way. I think all, I think we deserve, our teachers definitely deserve, to stop coming out of their pocket, because I'm here to tell you, they're the reason y'all are sitting in y'all's chairs today. I don't want my, I don't want my school to become a place where kids just sit at desks and do work. That will happen if we don't give enough money to keep teachers, keep classes and class sizes small, and give students the experiences we, as students, deserve. Funding our schools and teachers to have what they need to teach us will make them better and help us, and help make us better prepared to be working adults when we graduate. And I'll say this too. I'm sure those mics that are in front of you didn't come out of your pocket. Do you take it as that, too, coming out of our teacher's pocket? Take an example, my history teacher, he actually used the other history teachers' pencils- pencils when we need them down the hall, because she don't want it to come out of her pocket. And I mean, it's just sad, it really is, that they do so much for us, and I know they did a lot for you. I'm sure that y'all had plenty of teachers that helped y'all out in school, and I think they deserve a little bit more credit. He's going to talk for just a second, for the last little bit. That's okay.
Gentlemen, I just want to say, just want to remind you, and I'm sure y'all took oath, you work for the people of this county, taxpayers. You don't sit up there behind that desk and work for yourself. You work for the people. All these people have come out tonight to speak up, because this is what needs to be going on and happening. And as I've watched for the last twelve seconds, I've watched most of you sit up there and give a careless of what all these people have to say. Y'all ought to put a smile on your face and be thankful for this county and these people. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Williams, say, is it Danielle Williams? Danielle Williams, I guess?
I live and work in Rutherford County, and I have three kids that attend schools in Rutherford County. I have one in elementary, middle, and high school. I am a very active mom. If there is a school meeting, I'm there. I'm on the local parent advisory, the district parent advisory, PTO, and I mentor for robotics. If my kid has a ballgame, or a band competition, or a robotics competition, I'm there. And in the past twelve years, I have gotten to know teachers, principals, custodians, lunchroom ladies, SRO workers. I've got to know them very well and have the deepest respect for all of them, and I see how hard they work and the effects that it has on our children. In recent weeks, Rutherford County Schools has started marketing on Facebook that has been to inform our community about Rutherford County Schools. Dr. Sutton and our school board have gone above and beyond to be as transparent as possible. They have worked hard to debunk the myths that we have heard spread around our community about Rutherford County Schools. For every myth and lie that has been shared, there have been facts to back up the truth. I don't know if you have seen these Facebook posts, but I can assure you that the majority of our community has. And not only has our community been educated about Rutherford County Schools, but it has also caused us to voice questions. Questions like, where are all these myths coming from? And why would our county commissioners not support our schools? Or even questions like, where are all these myths, or excuse me, why would our county commissioners have close to sixty million dollars sitting in an account and not want to fully fund our schools? I think the Facebook marketing campaign has gone great, and it's a great reminder of how powerful social media can be. In case you haven't been following, Rutherford County Schools post a Why Education Matters post Monday through Friday, with Mythbuster Monday and Transparency Tuesday and so on. I looked back before coming tonight and to see how often these posts are being shared, and some are up to eight hundred shares, and that's not counting once it's shared and someone else shares it. So this going out to thousands in our community. So these posts are literally reaching thousands of people every day, people that are members of this community and are your constituents. And so far, all we hear from our county commissioners are excuses and myths. I just want to remind you, as elected officials, that you were elected to help our community prosper. It can't grow without a fully funded public school system. It blows my mind that we are even having to fight to get these funds approved. But after seeing how powerful social media has been for Rutherford County Schools, we, as parents of Rutherford County School children, can do our own marketing campaign.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your time. Ms. Gray, I think it's Chesley, Chesley Gray? I know I messed up your name. I apologize. Just hand it to her. Thank you.
I apologize in advance for reading from my notes and talking fast, but I have a lot to say. My name is Chelsea Gray. I'd like to briefly outline my credentials, not to emphasize personal accomplishment, but to establish the context for my information and recommendation. Correlation between educational attainment and reduced crime rate. Education is linked to better health outcomes and reducing healthcare costs. Please remember the mortality and child death rates I mentioned before. Education empowers parents to provide better support for their children, creating stronger and more stable families. Some may argue that we don't have the resources to increase school funding, but the statistics say we cannot afford not to do it. Lastly, I have seen first and firsthand how Rutherford County staff is being overworked and overwhelmed, and it has led to significant issues regarding adherence to IEP laws within our school system. My child has had her IEP violated twelve times in the one and a half years that she was at an elementary school in this county. Since the point of this meeting is budget, I do think it is important to remind the county commissioners that disregarding professional requests for help will expose the county to costly and disruptive lawsuits. If you choose to disregard the pleas from our educators, who are begging for more support to help our children and our children with disabilities, do not be surprised, there are costly mistakes that come unexpectedly out of your budget.
All right, thank you. Some Michelle Flynn. Good evening. You have three minutes.
My name is Michelle Flynn, and tonight I'm here to just share my heart, first as the parent of a student athlete in Rutherford County Schools. My son is a two-sport athlete, and he is in his junior year. He is already getting looks and having lots of conversations with colleges, universities. However, if the schools are not fully funded, one of the major things that will be cut is athletics. If he doesn't get to play his sport, he loses his dream. He's not the only one. I'm here speaking for all of those students today. Next, I'm also the president of the Big Red Football Boosters. I've watched those coaches pick a program that was non-existent three years ago and build it into something wonderful. That did not magically happen. These coaches have sacrificed over and over and over for those athletes that are on their teams. But it's not just about the sport. They have mentored them, they have been counselors to them. My son has come and told me about teammates struggling in different areas, contemplating things that we know they're dealing with, and who did that get to but their coach? Yet, we can't even fund a stipend for them? And what they're getting paid already doesn't even pay their gas back and forth, and we should appreciate them more than that. But lastly, I'm here as a follower of Jesus. We should be willing to sacrifice for our kids, because they are our future. Matthew eighteen-six says, "If anyone causes one of these children to stumble, it would be better for them to have a millstone tied around their neck and drown in the sea." Now, I'm not saying anybody's causing them to stumble, but I am saying we can prevent that. So I'm asking you, work together. Figure it out. We're smart people. Make a plan. I don't know what that looks like. It's not my job. But I know that our kids are worth it, and I ask you to invest in the future of our students and our community, and make this thing happen. Be the hero. Thank you.
Thank you. Hinckel, H-I-N-K-L-E? It's a parent. Seven-three-three-zero Hinckel? Here, we got somebody coming. All right, thank you. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Corey Hinckel, and I'm a Chase I graduate, year two thousand. After twenty-one years of service to my country, I retired in two thousand twenty-three from the U.S. Army and now operate a small transportation business within the county. I'm on the Local Advisory Committee for East Rutherford Middle School, the District Parent Advisory Committee for Ellenboro Elementary, and I'm the treasurer of the East Rutherford High School Band Boosters. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about an issue that affects not only our children, but the entire future of our community. I stand before you as a concerned citizen, a parent, and an advocate for our future, asking you to invest in our schools, not just as institutions of learning, but as a very heart of our community. Our schools are where our children build the foundation for their future. They are not merely buildings, they are environments that foster curiosity, creativity, and critical thinking. Every dollar invested in education translates into a stronger workforce, more engaged citizens, and ultimately, a more vibrant local economy. When we support our schools, we empower every student to reach their fullest potential, regardless of their background or zip code. We are at a pivotal moment in our history. With the decentralization of the Department of Education, our community faces many challenges. But among them is the challenge of providing an equitable, high-quality education for every child. Studies have consistently shown that well-funded schools are more capable of attracting and retaining excellent teachers, maintaining safe facilities, and offering diverse programs that cater to different interests and career pathways. College is not for everyone, and our current CTE curriculum fills those voids. By approving this funding, you are saying that our children deserve arts programs, advanced placement courses, and extracurricular activities that nurture leadership and innovation. I understand that budgets are tight and that every expenditure is scrutinized, but according to your published documents, the money is there. However, I ask you to view this funding not as a cost, but as an investment, one that yields dividends in the form of safer communities, lower crime rates, and improved quality of life for all residents. The successes we celebrate in our county schools today will be the building blocks of the community's success tomorrow. I urge you to consider the lives and futures of our children, and let's work together to build a community where education is not just a privilege for the few, but a promise fulfilled to every child. Over the past several months, I've attended meeting after meeting discussing costs and the inability to lower them. My daughter is already unable to take honors comp at East as a freshman because the teachers have been cut from six to four. Buses are being shared, SROs are being shared, teachers' incentives are far below the mean for surrounding counties. Where are the places for savings? Because we don't see them. How can we expect to lower our student-teacher attrition rate when you, as commissioners, refuse to give the schools the money they need to maintain basic operation? The answer is, you won't. Students will leave, teachers will continue to leave, and Rutherford County will lose its ability to provide a quality public education. For whatever reasons you have chosen to hold back on funding next year's budget, I urge you to reconsider them. We cannot move forward without it. It isn't fair to our teachers, our students, or our communities. And I didn't serve my country for twenty-one years to see my children use as political weapons, and that's exactly what you're doing.
Grant Bailey?
I am.
Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Grant Bailey. I'm a resident of Rutherford County for fourteen years, and like a lot of people, I chose to live here. And one of the reasons that I chose to live here was because of the balance of things that were offered: natural beauty, community. But the school systems are a big part of that. And I don't know if you have heard, but there's a budget shortfall. And I know that this situation is not of the county's creation. There's a balance of factors, there's a lot of things going on, you know, the state is not stepping up. But we're at a crossroads where they don't have anywhere else to turn. They need you guys to step up. And I know that you are trying to do your absolute best to balance a range of priorities. You're trying to exercise good fiduciary responsibility. You've got a lot of mouths to feed within the county, and these are not ordinary times. But this year, even though it's not good policy to use fund balance to fund public schools, that it's really what's required. I know that you guys have had some, well, I've heard rumors that there's some difference of opinion on whether funds should have gone to this or that. And I'm sure that with any budget negotiation of this size, there would be some friction within the stakeholders. That's certainly part of the process. But I think we can, I think you can, and all parties involved can offer each other the grace that we're all trying to work for the common good, that we all want the same things, and do what we need to do. Because we have really excellent value for dollar with our education system in Rutherford County, but that is not a renewable resource. It's not a hedge that can be trimmed, it's an egg that can be broken. And I've seen it at my own children's schools, the class sizes, the programs that aren't offered. There are things that have been very important to my education, which, you know, are just frankly not available here, and that's an acceptable compromise for me because of all the other things that Rutherford County has to offer. But if this goes further, if there are further reductions of programs, it would make it a much more difficult choice for me to, you know, to continue with my children in Rutherford County Schools. That's, you know, obviously, that's not a change that I want to make, but I think it would also make it a harder choice for others to move this community for the school. So I would ask you gentlemen to rise to these extraordinary times and meet the budget, and I hope in the future that we can go farther with that. Thank you.
Everybody in every school works to the bone for the benefit of our children, and they deserve more. You have failed to provide Rutherford County Schools with even inflationary increases for the last two years. You have failed to support the ongoing needs to provide SROs in every school. You have failed our children. But I'll tell you who hasn't failed our children. It is Rutherford County Schools who has not let your failure to support them affect children to the best of their ability. They cannot continue to carry your responsibilities. There are classrooms across this county with thirty-five-plus children in them because they are trying to consolidate their resources as best they can. Is this fair to our kids? No, it's not. I would invite every single one of you to spend the day in a classroom across this county and find out what's actually going on in the school and why they need more from you. Now, I want to focus a little bit on your own budget audit report and examining how we can do better for our kids. So I want to draw your attention to page eighty-two of your 2024 budget audit report. This is a list of your revenues that you collected for Rutherford County for 2023-24. The thing that I find most interesting is that your investment earnings category, you earned three-point-seven million dollars in that category alone. All told, your revenues category, you took in almost four-point-nine million, more than projected. That's almost the entirety of the break-even needs for Rutherford County Schools next year. Now, to make clear, that is almost five million dollars in positive revenue that this county has earned, mostly off my dime and every other taxpayer's pocket in this county. Now, moving on to page eighty-four of your audit, you started the year 2023 with a fund balance of fifty-four-point-six million dollars. At the end of the 2024 cycle, you had a fund balance of about sixty-three million dollars. That's a gain of eight-point-three million dollars, almost. I do understand that of that sixty-three million in the fund balance, that some of that was already designated for the 24-25 budget. If you look at page seventy-one in your audit report, you still had fund balance of thirty-one-point-five million that was not designated going into the 24-25 year. While RCS cut every possible penny they could to make sure the power stayed on, and they had enough adults to survive but not thrive, you made over four million on my dime and everybody else's dime in interest. Fund the schools completely, along with every other department you're responsible for. Thank you.
Megan Mathis. One five six five, Megan. School.
Commissioners, thank you for seeing me. My name's Megan Mathis, I'm a product of RS Central, class 2004. I want you to remember three key terms: autism, dyslexic, and ADHD. After I finished my time in the US Navy, I decided to come back to small-town-friendly Rutherford County. Guess what? I wanted the best for my child that has autism, dyslexia, and ADHD. When we moved back here, we didn't know he had those. We knew he had ADHD. Because of the people at Pinnacle Elementary, we got the help that he needed. Yes, he had a repeat degree, but that's fine. Because guess what? He's at reach now, and he's getting ready to graduate next year with an associate's degree along with a high school diploma. He already has colleges looking at him for swim, which, you know, that was underfunded also. But it's okay. We move forward. If you close Pinnacle Elementary because of the budget cuts, you are dis-servicing over half the county. If you look at the county map, majority of it is purple, and it is served by Pinnacle. I did not join the military just on a whim. It was because of Ms. Shambaw at Gilkey Elementary. Then I attended union mills. During my time at union mills, it was closed, and I had to move to RS Middle. That's good. But guess what? My bus ride went to two hours. What are those kids in Lake Lou are going to do if you close these elementary schools?
John Bridges. Hey, John Bridges. Welcome. Good evening, Siri. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this assembly. My name's John Bridges, I'm a 2002 graduate of East Rutherford High School, and my wife a 2004 graduate of Chase High School. We have two children in Rutherford County schools. I'm here to not provide public recommendation for the support and supplement to the Rutherford County schools budget. Our schools have leaking ceilings, our children have to temporarily move classrooms because of repairs, we have broken windows, doors that can't shut, grounds and buildings that are in bad need of cleaning and beautification, and large potholes that have to be dodged in the pickup and drop-off lanes. Has anyone in this body been to any of the schools, especially the older schools in the county, to see what their needs are? Kyra Baumgartner, Jill Price, Jennifer Davis, Paula Waldrup, Brittany Wall, these are all individuals that have poured into my children despite all these interruptions and distractions, and despite being what I know firsthand to be underpaid. See, my mom was a teacher, and many other members of my family. Despite their low, lower-tier salary, the educators of Rutherford County schools show a compassion and a performance that is unmatched. Our educators don't do it for the money, but they should be afforded a salary that reflects appreciation and the ability to survive. It's heartbreaking to hear a teacher whose spouse is also a teacher contemplate whether homeownership is even a possibility. North Carolina ranks 41st in the nation for teacher pay, and I don't know where Rutherford County ranks in North Carolina, but I'm willing to bet that it's near the bottom of the list. We're losing amazing educators to better-paying districts. Great educators are not a dime a dozen. This body can do something about that. It's necessary to remind this assembly once again, as others have, that the future of this county is in the education that the children of this county receive. We need a generation that does not take their talents elsewhere. I hope that this body understands that. People stay when they know that their children have opportunity. While this assembly and Rutherford County schools have whatever kind of disagreement you have, the children and educators suffer. And I don't care, and anybody else in this lobby, in the parking lot, anywhere, there are people everywhere, do not care what the dysfunction is. I sincerely appreciate all of you for running the county finances in the black, and I do mean that. But it does no good to run in a surplus when the house is caving in. Please stop saving more money than necessary while these children and their educators do without. The point that I'm making is a very simple one. Invest in this county by investing in our children and the largest employer in this county. The more money you invest locally, the healthier the local economy becomes. Please do what you were elected to do. And I'll end by saying this: please double whatever they're asking. It doesn't matter. Your question to them should be, can we do more?
All right. Looks like David Hensley, Hensler. How does that look like you? No? Yes? All right. Hey, welcome.
Hey. Good evening Commissioners. My name is Trent Hensley. My wife and I are both third-generation attendees of Rutherford County schools. You can say we've been here for a while. She now works at Forest City Dunbar, and both of our children attend the local elementary school. Our roots run deep in this county, and we know how vital our public schools are to the fabric and future of the community. That's why I'm speaking tonight, because we're deeply concerned about the direction that we're going. Public schools in this county are being stretched to their limits, budget needs are going unmet, teachers are overwhelmed, facilities are aging without proper attention, and families are left wondering why such a foundational part of our community continues to be overlooked. I'm not here to speculate or accuse, but I am here to speak plainly. When our public schools are consistently underfunded, and when more energy seems to go toward limiting support than building it up, the message is clear: public education is not being prioritized by you. And that's a problem, not just for students and teachers, but for the future of Rutherford County. Education shouldn't be a privilege for those who can afford private tuition or qualify for a charter lottery. It should be a promise, a strong, reliable public education for every child, no matter their zip code or their background. Our public schools are the great equalizer. When we fail to fund them properly, we're not just failing institutions, we're failing kids who don't have other options. Some fear we're on a path toward closures, consolidations, or shifting resources to private hands. Whether that's intentional or not, the impact is the same. A two-tiered system where opportunity depends on access and privilege, not fairness and investment. We cannot allow that to happen here, not in this county, not to our children. Commissioners, I urge you to reflect on the values this community holds, and to match those values with action. Fully fund our schools, not just the bare minimum, but what's right, what's needed, what our students and educators deserve. Because public education, it's not a charity, it's a public responsibility, and it must serve everyone. Thank you.
All right, thank you.[1134.41][1134.41](APPLAUSE) Adam Yelton. Mr. Yelton, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Adam Yelton. Thank you for being here and for caring about the future of our children, our schools, and our community. I stand before you today not just as a concerned citizen, but as the husband of a Rutherford County school teacher, the father of children who attend Rutherford County schools, and the product of Rutherford County schools. And let me tell you, I have seen firsthand the incredible dedication it takes to educate our kids. As a parent, I want my child to learn in a safe, well-equipped classroom with access to qualified teachers, updated material, and the support they need to thrive. I've watched my wife for hours in the lesson plan and welcoming space. It's a calling, and I can tell you that she, as well as many other public school teachers, are deserving of our county commissioners doing the right thing in approving the proposed budget. Across our county, teachers and administrators show up every day to give their best despite being underpaid, under-resourced, and most often, underappreciated. However, passion and love for the job can't keep the lights on in our schools. Love for the job can't buy the necessary education materials or fix our buildings and maintain the facilities without the necessary funding. Rutherford County schools requires that teachers be certified and/or obtain their certification via lateral entry. Yet, Rutherford County schools is required to give funding to a local charter school that doesn't require the same. Our teachers are the foundation of a strong and effective education system. They undergo years of training, continuous professional development, and a certification process to ensure they are equipped to meet the academic needs of our students. They are not just subject matter experts, they are mentors, role models, and advocates for our children. Having certified educators in the classroom makes a direct impact on student achievement and long-term success. My teachers with Rutherford County schools were some of the most influential people in my life. Some believed in me, most challenged me, but they all helped shape the person I am today. Their guidance and dedication gave me confidence and knowledge I needed to succeed, and I carry those lessons with me every day. Public school funding isn't just about money, it's about values and priorities. When we underfund our schools, we're sending a message to our children that their education doesn't matter. We're telling teachers that their sacrifices aren't worth it. Most importantly, we're risking the education system and safety that our youth are so deserving of. Inadequate funding means overcrowded classrooms, fewer counselors, and less security. It means kids falling through the cracks and teachers being burnt out. It's not just an education issue, it's a community issue, a safety issue. So today, I'm asking all of us to think about what kind of future we want to build. I'm asking you to stand for our teachers, our students, and our schools, because investing in public education isn't a charity, it's our responsibility.
All right, thank you.[1326.53][1326.53](APPLAUSE) I believe it's Tommy Dick. Tommy from Shelby, I guess. Welcome, sir. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tommy Dick. I'm the owner of Carolina Power Switching Corporation and currently serving as a deacon at Went Hill Baptist Church. My wife is an oncology practitioner at Levine Shelby. I start with this, and letting you know that my son is a, right now, a fourth grader at Sunshine Elementary. We send him out of district despite leaving in Cleveland County. And I want you to know that because we have choices, we have options, we have alternatives. When it became time for my son to start school, we went and we toured many places, public secular, Christian secular, looking around, finding for that best spot, until we finally, in what can only be described as a divine providence, found Sunshine Elementary School. Immediately recognized the school for what it was, a place where the goodness and worth radiates beyond its walls, spilling into the community like the sunshine its name for. We had toured other schools, Christian and secular, we had engaged with other staffs. This was different. Our son was hindered, as so many were, by COVID, and as such, a gap was there that needed to be bridged. Nestled in that valley, inside those walls, Sunshine staff worked diligently to close that gap. Thomas, now these few Sunshine-filled years later, was selected by Ranger Randy at Sunshine to be the lead programmer of the robotics team. This is a testament to the work of those special individuals at Sunshine. But their service extends beyond academics, not to be mistaken or understated, academics is definitely at the forefront, but that is kept in balance with the overall well-being of the child. When we lost my father, Charlie Dick, the staff at Sunshine once more poured into Thomas in a new, yet equally important way. Our family was in mourning, in pain, I was in pain. And yet, the day of my father's death, when I would have without hesitation consented to my son staying home from school, he asked with a face still damp with tears to go to Sunshine. Once there, Mr. Higgins at the time and the staff served a student in a way far beyond what someone would describe to a job. They were, in the truest and most purest sense, the embodiment of a teacher, in such real ways that even now, years later, I would lose composure if I tried to put it in words. I would simply say this: in my life, when I felt my weakest, Sunshine was there, for one that I hold most dear. It was sometime after this we learned of the impending retirement of Mr. Higgins. I am a firm believer in the importance and responsibility of leadership and the vital nature for the good or the bad. I can only describe once more divine providence, that in a place where the roots grow deep as the mountains that lovingly embrace that precious school, that one was selected to assume the mantle of leadership that was tied into those roots. Mears Davis was selected as the new principal and the new leader of the school, which we had logically and spiritually chosen, but which we had grown to love. Having seen Mears Davis's decisions and observed the fruit that were bared by those decisions, it is now with complete confidence that Thomas is dropped off each day. We see Sunshine for what it is, possibly as only someone without ties to Rutherford County can, a place of knowledge, a place of learning, a place of truth, and a place of love. It is because of how truly special Sunshine is that we are choosing.
Thank you. You're timed, sir. I really appreciate it.[1538.86][1538.86](APPLAUSE) Amy Kemper. Ms. Kemper. Spindale. One three three nine. Ms. Kemper, welcome.
I'm part of Spindale Elementary School's PTO, and I've come here to address the budget funding with the schools and stuff. As you see, I'm a proud parent. She goes to Spindale Elementary, and without the teachers and the funding, you would not be where she's at today. She has had trouble with her reading and stuff, and they have worked tremendously to help her get to where she's at. And I just want to show the support for the schools, for the Rutherford County Board of Education and everything, and I want to ensure that y'all will support the school system and help with the funding. And I hope and pray that with each testimony here from everybody and from all of the taxpayers here, I ensure that we would love to see y'all fulfill their fundings and healthy children, they are our future. They're what we have to look forward to, the ones that's going to be caring for us when we get older. So I hope y'all will look after our children and look after our future, and hopefully, I hope y'all will, like others have said, double their funding, double what they've asked for, to better see their children. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Is it Jeff Dallo?
Dallo.
Dallo, D-A-L-L-O, or D-A-H-A? It's kind of hard to read.
Right here.
Sorry, sir, it's all grung together. Welcome, sir. Good. You have three minutes, and please provide comments.
Before I begin my remarks, what a lovely, God-honoring prayer that was to open today's session, and I'd like to thank whoever prayed for us tonight. Next, I'd like to say, we appreciate you and your role as our Commissioners. I'm sure this process has not been easy or fun for your team. You've likely heard many opinions, and I can only imagine that that's made the decision-making process even more difficult. So thank you, each one of you, for your patience, for listening to us, and for all that you do. Admittedly, I'm not qualified to speak to the details of the proposed budget. I don't have a background in business, I haven't studied the current allocations closely enough to offer specific recommendations. But here's what I do know: our schoolteachers, administrators, and staff are truly special people, doing incredibly special work. They are more than educators, as many have said tonight, they are nurturers, mentors, and caregivers. I've seen them give themselves sacrificially, time and time again, for the sake of our children and our community. They didn't choose this profession for the compensation or the work-life balance. For many of them, working in this school system is, quite literally, a labor of love. But that labor is becoming more of a burden. Our educators are tired and stretched too thin. The resources they have simply aren't enough, not because of poor management, but because the needs are great. We need to do our part to help carry that burden financially. When our children were toddlers, my wife and I considered all the options: homeschool, Christian school, charter school, and public school. Christian school, charter school, and public school. We chose public school, and our kids have been at Mount Vernon Ruth since day one. Since then, we've learned that a school isn't just a system, it's a special place filled with people who truly care, and we really appreciate those people, so many of them. That's why Mount Vernon Ruth and schools like it across Rutherford County mean so much to families like mine. It's not just about the resources, it's about the relationships, and our kids love so many people that work at that school. So I'm asking on behalf of my family and many others, for you to please consider more funding for our public school system in Rutherford County, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Yes, sir, thank you. Have a good evening. Eva Rogers, is it Rogers, Eva? Eva Rogers, 4065, there you go, welcome. Good evening, please. Want a public comment, you have three minutes?
Thank you. Commissioners, we understand that there's a budget, that there's only so much money that comes in, and that everything has to be prioritized, because every family has a budget, and we have to decide where every dollar, every dime, sometimes every penny goes. So we understand that this is a hard decision, but if you're a homeowner and your gutter is leaking, you say, "Well, I don't have the funds right now to fix this." We can let it wait for a little while, so we get the money, we've got other priorities, but at a certain point, you start to realize that if you don't fix this gutter, you're going to have rotten siding, you're going to have mold, and you're going to have a weakened foundation. And I think all of us are here, because we strongly feel that the school system is at this critical tipping point, that if you don't step in and put money into this, there are going to be a whole lot more expenses down the line. You know, I'm a parent, a volunteer, and a substitute teacher, so I've seen the school system from the outside and the inside, and I see how hard these employees work. In the last few years, they have been carrying the workload of two or three positions, and you just can't carry that kind of a load for so long without feeling the effects. But I know how much they love every child in these schools. And just like a house is the most valuable asset that most families have, school system is the foundation of our community, and if our foundation is cracking and weak, the whole community is going to feel it. It is the basis of our county. Our school system is the most valuable asset that we have, and because of that, we've got to find the money to prioritize them. We have faith. We elected you to be able to find a way, put our priorities in order, and if you ask any family in this county, and we have so many diverse families, I'm pretty sure that most of them will say that the most important thing in their life is their family. So if you're asking us what we want to put our money for in this community, it's for our kids and our school system, because that is what makes a strong community. Thank you.
Well, thank you. (APPLAUSE). Looks like it, Gary Scruggs. Gary, good evening. You have three minutes?
Thank you, Mr. King.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, county commissioners, for being here, for allowing everybody to speak. I grew up in this county, I spent my whole life here, grew up in the same quarter-mile. I went to Cliffside Elementary, went to Chase Middle when it started, graduated Chase High, graduated ICC, I'm 42, almost 43, been here my whole life. I'm proud of my community. My wife teaches at Cliffside, my daughter's in kindergarten at Cliffside. Cliffside was built in 1920 by Rutherford Haynes that started Cliffside Mills. It wasn't built by the county, so it was over 100 years old, and it's still there, it's still functioning. It's where my dad went, it's where my uncle graduated high school. I'm lucky enough now that I have my own business, I'm able to work in the county and the surrounding area, don't have to go to Charlotte anymore, don't have to go to Greenville, those places, you know. I see a lot of houses, whether it's new builds or rewiring and building, I know Cleveland County's growing, Rutherford County's growing some, you know, we need strong schools to attract families. I know people that I graduated with that left and came back 20 years later to raise their family here, because they wanted this community. They didn't want to live in a city, they didn't want to live where they were, you know, and I know that we all have to be good stewards of our money, and I know in the past, you've asked the county to reduce admin staff, and they've done that. They've put people back in the classroom. SRO, you know, I think it's important we have a SRO at every school, because there's nothing more important than our family members, our teachers, our kids, you know. Last thing we want is to be on the news for something bad. When I was in school, you know, I went to school with a kid that stabbed a girl any time, you know. It didn't happen at school, but it affected the whole school, you know, and those things are there. We have a lot of poverty in our communities, and our teachers are the ones that are serving, you know. Cliffside's not much, I don't even know how many of you's ever been to Cliffside, you've been to Cliffside Elementary School. They've got May Day coming up, I'll welcome you to all come out, and you'll see that community supported school. You'll see people that don't have much, but they love that school, they love those teachers, they love Ms. Ellis. So please, support our schools. If you want the county to grow, invest in the schools, because people aren't going to bring their kids and their family here if they don't believe that they're going to get a good education. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. (APPLAUSE). Jan Fishkin, Fishkin, regarding Sunshine School. Another public comment, person signed up, Jan Fishkin. It looks like, or is that a hint there? Going once. Is there Jan Fishkin? Last four digits of cell number, I can read that, 1716. Sorry, the handwriting just. So they decide for right now, Jan shows up, we'll see her in three minutes. Larry Skipper, Larry? Is there Larry Skipper for public comment?
Good evening, commissioners, thank you for opening this up for people to speak at. First of all, I want to thank my Lord Jesus for allowing this to happen for me tonight. A lot of the stuff has already been covered, but I'll just put a different spin on it. I think we need more transparency on where the quarter percent of the, for the sales tax was raised in 2018, to know where that's going for the schools, building new schools and whatnot. You know, the schools in the county, all of them, you know, are affected by the budget cuts, worrying about money, where it's going, and where it's coming in. The teachers in the county should not have to lay in bed at night worrying about their next sheet of paper, where it's coming from, or their next pencil, or their next eraser. You know, a lot of the schools in the county do fundraisers, I helped Cliffside with their Fall Carnival in the fall, they raised a good amount of money for just essentials that they need. Fundraisers shouldn't be for essentials. Fundraisers should be for extras for the kids who do good all year, and then take them on field trips, this and that, whatever they want to do with it. The essentials should come from the school, the school board, and the county commissioners. That's what y'all are here for. First and foremost, they should never worry about where their money is coming from, it should always be there. Education should be the first and foremost thing that the county commissioners worry about. If you don't worry about that, then the students leaving Rutherford County Schools are not going to be educated well enough to get the jobs that may be coming in here from industries that we can't attract from them, okay? Other thing I wanted to say was, you know, Cliffside, I grew up in Cliffside and resident Cliffside, got two, my son's already been through Rutherford County Schools, my daughter will be a freshman in the fall, but there's, when I went to Cliffside School, and she's here somewhere tonight, Michelle Lucky-Dude Clements, she's the principal at RS Elementary, just people that went through Cliffside, and it's not just Cliffside, it's all schools in the county, but, you know, there was always passion at Cliffside for the students, and there is today. Ms. Ellis that is the principal there today and her staff, just full of passion for the kids. Hope Putnam, I went to school with her, she's a kindergarten teacher there, you know, and I've seen her and talk about, her talk about, you know, buying stuff out of her pocket for her kids. That should never have to happen with any teacher in any classroom in the school system. You know, so I just, I urge you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your time. Tyler Schultz, we have another public comment from a Tyler Schultz, Morseboro, regarding Tyler, okay. All right, well, we'll skip somebody else then. Just kidding, come on in. Fine, sir, glad you're here. Welcome, and whenever you're ready, you have three minutes.
All right, my name's Tyler Schultz, I'm a Rufton County citizen, and I'm working the intake for the PPDR program, the private property debris removal. Insurance don't like to cover anything unless it hits your house or blocks a driveway, so the US Army Corps made this program, we can take care of that. If you're a taxpaying citizen, if you pay federal taxes, then you're overqualified. I have to sit there and tell people, "Hey, you live, you live in Ellenboro," and then they look at me with dreaded eyes, and I'm like, "I can't help you." But, you know, Chimney Rock and Lake Lure, they're under the same umbrella, same people, same, I might actually be moving there, as far as I'm doing Polk intake, but right now, starting tomorrow, potentially, I might be doing the Lake Lure and Rutherford County intake, or Lake Lure and Chimney Rock. So I just want to bring it up. From my understanding, they said that this level denied the program, and my main question was why, and if that's not the case, or, you know, just why, simple question. And it's hard, it's hard to tell people, "Hey, you can't help because it's invisible, it's invisible line." It's, you know, you might be two miles off the line, there's people on Cox Road with Rufton County in their name, but they're Polk County taxpayers, and they're getting it, and it's offered free. It's not funded by FEMA, if that makes any difference to anyone, it's funded by the US Army Corps of Engineers. And I would just be really appreciative if we could look into it for our citizens in this county, because I'm serving our neighbors, and you can ask them, I believe the Army Corps is doing one heck of a job, and see what they say, see how it's been, and maybe moving forward, we can do this for our citizens here in Rutherford County.
All right, thank you.
And also, I wasn't really wanting to speak on the whole education of the school, but a big voice tonight. So there's two Bitcoin facilities in this county, cryptocurrency, the golden age is coming, and we've been mining crypto in this county for like a year, possibly two. Maybe we should tax that, because that's a pretty big bill. Just maybe we can grab some money from crypto and put it in the pockets of the teachers and such. Well, not quite their pockets, but.
Interesting.
And I believe, trying to make sure I use all three minutes. Insurance.
You're doing great.
Thank you. The insurance is not, it's not going to disqualify you, we just want to make sure that you don't claim and pocket the money, and then get free care from the US Army. So that is a question. Oh, I've helped someone look at their deed and get their life squared away for afterlife plans, so I have to, you know, prove that they're citizens, but look at your deeds, get it ready for it.
All right, thank you, you used all your time. Appreciate it, sir. Jessica Godfrey, Jessica, regarding county schools and funding, Jessica Godfrey. Welcome.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity. Been overwhelming to be here tonight, just to see all the folks in the room next door and in this room. I am a Rutherford County native, a product of the county school system. I am a hospice grief counselor, that job requires a master's degree, and luckily, I had wonderful educators, guidance counselors, teachers poured their love and support into me, made sure I got to college and got the training and education that I needed. My husband is the manager of spiritual care and education at Adrian Health Cleveland. He is also a graduate of RS Central High School, class of 2004, we're representing well tonight. Just want to speak to the funding of the schools. I have a second grader at Rufton Elementary School. I was terrified when she was about to start kindergarten. You hear rumors about starting school, and where should you go, and all these decisions that should never be on kindergarten parents, but they are, and we chose to go to Rufton Elementary, that is the closest school to our home. We have loved it. She has thrived, she loves school. I'm also the daughter of two retired Rutherford County educators. My mother always said, "If I can get a child to love school, that is 99% of the battle." My child loves school. She has a younger sister who is about to start kindergarten next year at Rufton Elementary, who is excited about school just because her sister loves it so much. And if you are so excited to go to a place every day, "I want to go there too," she says. So the school said, "We need people to come out and show support and plead for funding." And so, I don't normally talk in this type setting, this is not my element, but I can, because it's important. So please, do your part. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey Brown, or Casey Bowen, I think it's Brown, 4072. I apologize if I messed up on your name there.
Oh, no, you're fine. Just don't, I mean, I'm kind of smaller than everybody else. Good evening, Chairman King, Commissioners, and Mr. Garrison. I'm here today to express my deep concern over the decision to withhold funding from the Rutherford County school system. What may seem like a standoff between leadership and a clash of egos is in reality causing real and lasting harm to our children and educators. There is talk of cutting extracurricular activities, something that would be absolutely detrimental to both current enrollment and graduation rates. Many of our students are driven to succeed in the classroom because they know it's the key to participating in sports, clubs, and activities they love. For some, these opportunities are their only chance at a future beyond high school. Including access to scholarships and college acceptance, opportunities, or increased stress on teachers puts their well-being at risk. And let's not forget our teachers. They are here because of their passion for teaching and the love they have for their students. We all know our educators are underpaid and underserved, yet they show up every day, give their all, and often reach into their own pockets just to ensure their students have what they need, to how funds are managed within the school system. However, punishing our staff and students by disrupting their education and essential services is not a solution. I urge the commissioners to do what's right, release the funds needed to keep I urge the Commissioners to do what's right, release the funds needed to keep our schools functioning at a level our students deserve. Let's keep their routines intact, their opportunities alive, and their futures within reach, while holding leadership accountable behind the scenes and not in the classrooms. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. We do have another public comment, it's Christine Hagan, or Hager, I can't read the last character, but I think it's Hagan. Forest City. Good evening.
Good evening. I have been a proud resident of the Chase community since the 93-94 school year. My oldest daughter was part of the first class to attend Horace W. Hunt. As a grandparent slash parent due to circumstances in our lives, I have a six-year-old, ten-year-old, twelve-year-old, and a sixteen-year-old due to the passing of their mother, my daughter. I would like to highlight some of the resources, I had many, but I don't have enough time for that, because if it was not for the support that I received from Horace W. Hunt, Chase Middle, Chase High School, and now Rutherford Opportunity Center, I would not be able to do this by myself. One of the biggest things that I was able to have as a resource is the in-school grief counseling for her children, because with the whirlwind of everything that was going on, I don't think taking them outside and into a private facility for this type of counseling, I don't think I would have been able to accomplish. Sorry. I know through experience the effect that our educators, resource officers, counselors have on our children that will, they will always carry with them. At my age, and due to the circumstances, I should not be on the front lines of the school system at 60 years old. Both my daughters graduated from Chase High School. Being on the front lines and being seated behind a desk, you cannot possibly have any knowledge of what is needed. To have a principal with three to 400-plus students and countless staff, it is unheard of that one of their concerns should be where the funding is going to come from. I have such a busy lifestyle with the situation that I have. I didn't have much knowledge of what was going on in the county due to the funding that they're not receiving. But to me, this whole thing is really unnecessary, and it should have been a given that these funds should be available to, to me, the biggest part of our county is the public school system. And I think that's all I have, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Amanda Casilio? Did I do better that time?
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Amanda Casillas, and on March 3rd, I came before the board with concerns in regards to the Rutherford County Schools yearly funding, questioning the decrease of enrollment, and some concerns about inappropriate and decent and harmful material in the classroom. I have partnered up with Moms of Liberty, the North Carolina Value Coalition, and also the Pavement Education Project, which has a lot of resources. Using the Destiny Follet System, which is used by the Rutherford County Schools, I have found 128 books that are inappropriate in kindergarten through 12th grade. They were deemed harmful according to the North Carolina State Law definition at General State 14-109-13 through 17A and 17C. These books, and I will, I know that children are here, I did not know that, I will ask that the parents please turn down the volume of their auto if they're listening by phone, or please have them leave the room where the monitors are. These books are disgusting and horrible and inappropriate content that shook me, that shocked me. It contained detailed sexual activity, sexual nudity, obscenes referring to fingering, intercourse, masturbation, gay and lesbian practices, promotions of drug and alcohol use, gender ideology, abundance of profanity, exalting suicide, critical race thinking, violence, hate, bestiality, and diverse equity inclusion. These books rated zero to five in the severity of their content. 128 books in the Rutherford County Schools that rated two to five. For your sake, all that information is there. There is a book titled Drama that is in most of the elementary schools in Rutherford County, which contains a picture of two boys kissing. They're in a drama, one is dressed as a soldier, the other boy is dressed in a red dress, and they're kissing, and there's an image in that book in four of the schools here in Rutherford County. Middle School, a book called Hate You Give, inflammatory racial comments, six different profanity words used a total of 236 times. There's a page that says, that talks about throwing rocks in garbage cans at windows at McDonald's, saying, burn the B-word, I don't curse here nor anywhere else, so. Standing on police cars, throwing rocks at police cars, F the police, multiple times, not only on that page, but many pages. Talking against the white race, and I'm not white nor black, I'm brown, so. Page 234, mothers talking to their daughters, asking if they're taking their birth control pills. Page 320, which is African-Americans ganging together, saying, we want our freedom, we want to end police brutality, complete freedom, justice, and equality at any means. And my time is up.
Time's up. Thank you so much.
My concern is there.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Tony Smith. Hey, Tony Smith. Oh, hey, Tony. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Appreciate everybody, everybody coming out. My name is Tony Smith, I'm 30 years, I was, worked in the Rutherford County School System, I retired as a principal there in the county with the school system, so I was in the trenches, and my wife also, 30 years, she spent in the, in the school system, and I have kids who went to school in Rutherford County School System, I have kids who've become teachers in, in the system. Matter of fact, I have two stepdaughters that became teachers, one is still teaching at Ellenboro now, and I'm very proud of them. And even more important personally to me now, I have grandchildren that are in the system. Two in the system and two that will be in the system very soon. Rutherford County is a great place to live. I moved here right out of college, got my first job at East Rutherford High School, and stayed there and stayed here in Rutherford County all this time. We have, you know, a lot of great resources, the community, the town has really grown and changed all throughout the county over the past 10 to 15 years especially. For those of you who have been around know what I'm talking about. But we want our kids to have all the, all the opportunities and the resources that you hear about, you know, we, we hear all the time, well, this is what they do in Mecklenburg County, or this is what they do in, in Raleigh, or this is what they do in Guilford County. We, you know, our kids can have those same, same opportunities and those same resources, and we want our kids to, to live their lives and want to stay here. Okay? And grow this community even more. And when they have their kids, we want their kids to go to school here, you know, in, in the county also. So I guess, you know, a lot's been said, and the message is pretty clear that, and I urge each, each and every one of you to listen, especially to our school leaders. They're the ones that are in the trenches, they understand what their needs are and what's going on. And please, it's time for us to step, to step up, all of us, and think about our children, and we need to invest all the resources that are needed in, in for the kids in Rutherford County Schools, and I mean all the kids, all the children. Thank you.
Allison, oh, there you are.
Good evening. My name is Allison Flynn, and I'm a lifelong citizen of Rutherford County. I'm also a graduate of Rutherford County Schools, I graduated in 1995 from Chase High School. My mother also was employed as a teacher in Rutherford County Schools. My oldest son graduated last year from Chase High School, where he was ranked sixth in his class. Now he is a first-year student at Western Carolina University, and anticipates that he will graduate in the fall of 2026 with his Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration and Law. He will be able to achieve this as a direct result of the opportunities that he had through Rutherford County Schools with advanced placement courses and college courses through Isothermal. My younger son is currently in fifth grade at Harris Elementary, and was recently in the county spelling bee, where he placed second place as a fifth grader. I'm excited that he will begin middle school this fall. However, I'm very concerned, will he have the same opportunities once he reaches high school that his older brother had if funding shortfalls continue from the state and from this government body? Education, along with many other vital services, has fallen victim to partisan talking points. Making education a partisan issue risks prioritizing agendas over facts, compromising intellectual integrity, and undermining trust in educational institutions. Education and voting on matters that involve it should be free from political agenda, and instead focus on ensuring that all learners have equitable access to information and opportunities. An educated populace is one that can uphold democracy. I implore you, please consider the needs of Rutherford County Schools students and others who are employed by Rutherford County Schools, as they are also, many of them lifelong citizens of Rutherford County. Please adequately fund our schools, and thus you will be funding our future. Because I have a little time left, I also would encourage you, if you haven't made it out into our schools and seen all the wonderful things that are happening there, please do, please visit. I am sure that any of them will welcome you. I will tell you, Brandon Hill is here, he's principal at Harris, he would absolutely welcome you in at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Silvers, is there a Jennifer Silvers? Hello, Jennifer, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Please come up, you have three minutes.
I'll read this first. I'm here tonight to advocate for the children, teachers, administrators, and support staff of Rutherford County Schools. Additionally, I am advocating for our local residents and business owners who rely on strong public schools to keep our community thriving. Communities without strong school systems do not attract the talent necessary for economic development, and we cannot afford to let that happen here. The citizens of this county elected a conservative school board that we trust, and we expect you to trust them too. Make our schools your number-one budget priority and fund our kids. While it is true that Rutherford County Schools enrollment has declined by 24% since 2008, full-time staff has been reduced by 36% in response. Still, 7,161 students and 902 employees remain. These aren't just numbers, they represent more than 8,000 individuals who, whose education, livelihoods, and futures depend on the decisions made here. Many of you are products of our county schools, as am I. For many, school is the one place where they feel seen, supported, and encouraged. Why would we choose to take away the opportunities we had and not fully fund these needs? Are our children not worth this investment? Research shows that children facing poverty or adverse childhood experiences are more likely to struggle academically. Rutherford County has high poverty rates, with 69.2% of students considered economically disadvantaged. While the overall Rutherford County Schools population has declined, they continue to serve the vast majority of the county's most vulnerable students, including those needing IEP services. I believe these students deserve the resources and attention needed to thrive, and Rutherford County School deserves the funding to continue being the best. While we hope every child has a safe, loving home, the reality is that many rely on the teachers as their only consistent resource or source of care and encouragement. These students need educators who aren't stretched so thinly and overwhelmed by huge class sizes and diminished resources, and who can give them the support they deserve. As a parent of Rutherford County, children of Rutherford County Schools, I've seen firsthand how schools do more than educate, they help raise our kids with compassion and commitment. In a small town like ours, families from all walks of life depend on these public schools and the staff in them. Safety for our children and the staff who care for them is also paramount. For those of you who are fathers, you understand there's no price too high for your child's safety. Hiring enough school resource officers to place one full-time in every school would cost an additional $416,000 and should be funded, but not by playing politics and making our school board choose to cut their, other areas. Okay, I'm running out of time, so I just want to say, please, I urge you to approve the requested funds for Rutherford County Schools, and consider an additional amount of a total of 5.8 to include full-time protection in each school.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. We have a Garen Hill, is there a Garen Hill for a public comment tonight? Hello, sir, you have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you all for having me. My name is Garen Hill, I am the pastor of one of the churches whose picture hangs on the outside there, and I'm very proud of that. But for 177 years, folks in our church, it's not the building, it's been the people in our church who have been gone out and loving our community, many of them who've been teachers. Spoiler alert, I've not been the pastor for 177 years. I came 10 years ago, and before I came 10 years ago, my sons attended Thomas Jefferson, and they attended Thomas Jefferson for years, and when we moved here, they had attended Thomas Jefferson for years, they still, to this day, attend Thomas Jefferson. I follow an ancient carpenter, though, and long ago, he was asked about his family, and his response was, it's the people who do the will of God are the people who are my family. And I will admit to you that I saw a family member of mine when I walked in this room, and they're sitting in the room beside me, and they're probably still standing out there in the rain, and they're watching by the hundreds online, and I'm here on their behalf today. I love this place, I think you all have done a wonderful job. I've had the opportunity to be a part of Leadership Rutherford, which has been so cool to see the opportunities that people are going through, just all the things that are going on here, it's fantastic. I love this place, I love being a part of it. It's cool to see the economic development that is happening and the businesses that are coming here. What is interesting, though, is that when we talk about economic development, we're talking about getting people into the county, and my son is 17 years old, he's talked about being a teacher, I don't know if he will or not, I'd love for him to come back and be the, the art teacher at RS Central, or the drama teacher at East. I want him to have that opportunity. We, we have people who are in the room already that I'd love to be able to take care of. We talk a lot about who we can get in, we already have people here. It's the low-hanging fruit. We can keep them without having to attract other people. I, I, I hope that that can happen. The last thing I want to share with you is, I think the narrative around this has gone crazy. I, I want you to know how I'm going to walk away from this. I'm going to walk away from this entire experience, saying, you know, you all had different ways that you thought about spending the money, but what you came to the conclusion of, I don't know how many people normally attend your meetings, I'm guessing it's not this many, you heard the ground swell of all the people, and you saw the people who were sitting over here, and the people who were outside, and the people who stood in the rain for hours, and the hundreds of people who watch online, and you said, you know what, we had to listen to the people because that's what we do. And that's the story that I'm going to tell of what you all did after this is all over, and I'm very grateful for that, so thank you for all you do for this county, I'm very grateful.
All right, thanks for your time. Can you read that? Is that a shoe or something? Yeah. So Julie Finder, Fincher?
Fincher.
Fincher? Is that it?
Julie Fincher.
It's Fincher.
Fincher.
Well, just, uh, we're gonna do a handwriting class going forward.
That was, I was the last one to sign up.
Oh, okay.
And she was having to take it from my hand as I was signing up, and I still got in here.
I meant that, I meant that, all of them, not just you.
But yes, mine is very, very messy.
But welcome, welcome. You have, um, three minutes. Um, hold on a second, reset the clock. Okay, now give her three minutes. All right, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you all for letting me speak this evening. Um, good evening. As I've said, my name is Julie Fincher, and I have two daughters who attend Rutherford County Schools. I've had the opportunity to get to know many school staff over the years, as I have served as a PTO president, parent advocate, local advisory council member, district advisory council member, and as a parent volunteer in several of our schools. I've often told my daughters over the years that they are loved and protected, both at home and at school. But the harsh reality is that for many children in our community, school is the only place where they feel safe, loved, and protected. While providing a quality education is the main mission of our school system, our educators and staff go far beyond that goal every single day. They offer compassion, support, attention, and guidance, meeting not just academic needs but emotional and social needs as well. I know everyone in this room has a story of a beloved teacher or school staff member who made a lasting impact on them. I certainly do. I have many of those. From my own childhood to the experiences of my daughters, I have seen firsthand the difference that dedicated educators make. From the very first day we walked into Forest Hunt Elementary for kindergarten orientation, our family has been deeply touched by the love and support of teachers and staff. I remember my oldest daughter's first day of kindergarten, the way her teacher hugged me with love in her eyes and promised to protect my baby girl. I remember the tears of joy from teachers when my daughters have won science awards, Olympic, science limpiad, book challenges, volleyball and soccer games, and art contests. And I remember the calls and messages from school staff checking on them when they were sick and the comforting voices that answered my own calls when I had concerns or fears. Every single day, our teachers, administrators, custodians, cafeteria staff, librarians, coaches, and support teams show up for our children, even as they face dwindling supplies, funding shortage, and growing demands. They stay late, cover for sick coworkers, buy supplies, food, clothes, out of their own pockets, and still find the time and energy to lead extracurriculars, help with bus duty, and offer one-on-one support and tutoring. Imagine what could be achieved if, instead of just scraping by, our schools were fully funded, not just at the minimal level requested, but with the full backing of our county commissioners and community leaders. We elected you to support the residents of this county and help our county grow. There is no greater investment you can make than in the success of our public schools. When our schools thrive, our county thrives. A quality education from the public school system leads to higher education, better jobs, increased local spending, and stronger communities. But this cannot happen without adequate funding. We must invest in enough staff and teachers. We must provide safety through SROs. We must fund sports, arts, and other extracurricular activities. We must ensure our classrooms are equipped, supported, and ready to serve every child who rots through these doors. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we'll try a repeat. Um, Jan Fishkin was called earlier. Jan Fishkin, last four digits of cell number is 1716 regarding Sunshine. This is one of the earlier, um, request, and I was giving her one more chance, because I shoved it near the end. And, all right. We have a Mr. Stuart Bean. A Stuart Bean from, um, I guess Farm Bureau? That's what he said. Welcome, you have three minutes, sir.
Good evening. Three minutes is gonna go by quick, so I'm gonna be very fast in my reading. Um, Commissioners, my name is Stuart Bean. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Rutherford County Farm Bureau Organization. For those that don't know, Rutherford County Farm Bureau is a nonprofit organization in Rutherford County, consisting of almost 7,000 members that are all based here in Rutherford County. And, uh, our mission is to promote agriculture, agriculture education, and support our rural communities, and that is why we are here tonight. I'm also 2009 graduate, Chase High School, where my education there and wonderful leadership training, uh, pushed me into entrepreneurship here in the county. I'm a full-time farmer, own bean farms, and co-owner of Big Bottom Milk Company. I stand before you today to advocate for something that is fundamental to the future of our community, and that is education. Specifically, I urge you to fully fund the budget request for Rutherford County Schools. In rural communities like ours, education is more than just a path to opportunity. It is the lifeline that connects our children to a brighter, more promising future. Our schools are the heart of our communities. They are where dreams take root and futures are shaped, but they can only thrive if they have the resources they need to succeed. In Rutherford County, North Carolina, a third-grade assistant teacher can still remember the names of many of her students 20 years after those students attended her class. Ms. McAbey at Harris Elementary remembers my name, not because I was a stellar student, but because we had small class sizes, assistant teachers, and a supportive atmosphere, all of which are made possible through adequate funding. Because of the previous stated qualities, educational performance in rural counties often exceeds education quality in urban areas. I am confident that nobody here tonight wishes our school system to mirror that of New York, Atlanta, DC, or even Charlotte. When we invest in education, we are not just funding classrooms or textbooks. We are investing in the potential of every child. We are ensuring that our rural students, who often face greater challenges due to geographic and economic isolation, have access to the same opportunities as their peers in more urban areas. Our teachers, our staff, our students are doing incredible work, but without the full funding they deserve, they are being asked to do more with less. I urge you to consider the long-term impact of your decisions. A well-funded education system means a stronger, more resilient community. It means a workforce that is equipped to meet the challenges of the future. It means that our children, our future leaders, will have the resources they need to succeed, no matter where they're from.
Thank you, sir, your time's up. I really appreciate it. We have, uh, Miss Annie Dance?
Evening, Commissioners. My name's Annie Dance. For those who don't know me, I live in Green Hill. I've been a Green Hill resident for about five years. I'm here tonight not only as an independent journalist, but as a taxpayer and a concerned citizen. In life, there are moments and events that happen that define how we go forward. We have, I was in college in New York on September 11th, 2001. It was before 9/11 and after 9/11. And there's before Hurricane Helene and after Hurricane Helene. I really encourage you, I don't know where it is, because I've sent multiple emails. I'm a mostly deaf person. I communicate mostly in writing and by email. I've sent emails to ask about the private property debris removal. On my journals and Facebook page, last month, I shared a video, a live video, that has 8,200 views. There are at least that many people interested in this topic, and I really encourage those in power to do the right thing.
Motion we approve, consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? You're gonna call a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed likewise? Commissioners, next item's 4121. This is a resolution recognizing April 13th through 19th as National Public Safety Telecommunication Communicator Week. I'd like to recognize it this time. Scott with, uh, there you go, sir. Good to see you again.
See you guys, too.
Keep going. Where'd everybody go? Where'd you start?
Uh, good evening. I just want to bring the opportunity to ask April 13th and 19th recognized as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. Um, as you all know, our 911 telecommunications manage an unexpected level of calls for service during Hurricane Helene. Uh, we manage approximately 400 phone calls on an average day. On that Friday that Helene first started, um, in the 24 hours, we managed to answer approximately 2,400 phone calls. Uh, we also dispatched approximately 1,300 calls for service to EMS, fire departments, law enforcement, DOT, North Carolina Highway Patrol, and power companies. Um, we answered the EOC phone calls from that first day into the following week. Uh, we had one telecommunicator went a step above and was able to reach out to parents of their son who lived in Canada to ease his worries. Others helped coordinate a helicopter rescue, saving a subject in Lake Lor. Another took a call from someone trapped in rising waters, only to be disconnected, not knowing what the outcome of was that person. Uh, we had three telecommunicators that worked close to 24-hour shifts that day. Uh, what we witnessed with Helene was unprecedented event that I have never seen in my 30 years in emergency services. Um, as bad as that storm was, I want you all to realize that our staff performs this level of passion and dedication on a daily basis. In a single day, they can encounter tragedies, emotional calls, or it could be the simplest day. No matter the type of day, they perform the highest levels and work together as a team. When people hear someone mention 911 telecommunicators or 911 dispatchers, most people think, "Oh, they answer the 911 calls and dispatch the help," but they do not know or see all that is expected of them. While one telecommunicator may be busy providing CPR instructions to a caller trying to keep their loved one alive, another telecommunicator in the room is dispatching that CPR call, while they're also answering the call taker's channel because they're busy giving the CPR. One telecommunicator could be working on a traffic stop that an officer just called in while they're taking the call for a motor vehicle crash. Another telecommunicator could be working a fire and EMS channel for a structure fire while simultaneously answering phone calls. Point is that our staff manages so much during their shift that the majority of people do not realize all that they do unless they are having to be sitting in the room observing. I forgot to mention that while all those scenarios are being played out, they're also managing NCIC paperwork for the five law enforcement agencies in this county. This includes entering, modifying, or clearing all wanted missing persons, stolen vehicles, articles, child support warrants, and domestic violence orders issued from the courts. All this while keeping calm with callers and themselves to manage the phones, radio traffic, ad documenting, and anything else thrown upon them at any given moment. Other than my request that you recognize National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week, I ask that you take a small part out of your day during that week to visit our center. See the hard work that they perform, listen to their stories of what they dealt with during Helene, or maybe a good field story, or that tragic phone call they took for someone who could not be saved. All of us that have worked in 911 has at least one story like that. All too often, our staff are referred to as the unrecognized heroes, voices in the dark, or never seen but always heard. They're often overlooked when thanks are being shared in incidents or lifesaving events. We often see thanks sent out to medics, firefighters, officers, which I'm not lessening any of those. They value, their value is, is extremely important to this county. Um, they do not do it for the glory, as I think anyone in public safety feels. Our team simply just wants the same recognition that all first responders receive for their part in Rutherford County's public safety team. I'd like to have you all just recognize, um, the important work that our staff does for this county.
Awesome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Hazel, I believe you have a resolution you want to read for us, correct?
Resolution recognizing April 13th through 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. Whereas the National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week event was originally established by Patricia Anderson in the Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office in California in 1981. And whereas the purpose of the week is to celebrate and show thanks and appreciation for all those individuals who served the public through public safety communications. And whereas this second week of April has been set aside to honor and recognize telecommunicator personnel and all the work they do each day, now therefore be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the week commencing April 13th, 2024, and concluding April 19th, 2025, shall be recognized as National Public Safety Telecommunicate Week in Rutherford County, adopted as the 7th day of April, 2025.
Thank you, Hazel. And may I ask, was that April 13th, 2024, or 2025?
Twenty-five.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Commissioners, there is a resolution before you. I look for the will of the board.
Motion to approve a resolution.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion to second, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're gonna call a question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed likewise? And let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. We have a, like, recognize, our DSS Director, Dee Hunt. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see behind the podium there. Good to see you, ma'am. Director.
Good evening, Chairman King, Commissioners, and our county leadership. My name is Dolores Hunt, and I have the honor and the privilege of serving as the Director of DSS, our Department of Social Services here in our county. I'd like to thank you for allowing just a few moments to speak on the matter that is not only central to the mission of DSS, but also vital to the health and future of our community, child abuse prevention. Each April across North Carolina and, of course, in our county and our nation, we recognize Child Abuse Prevention Month. It is a time for reflection, for recommitment, and raising awareness about the role every one of us plays in ensuring that children grow up in a safe, nurturing environment, free from harm, and filled with hope. At DSS, we are privileged, but also burdened with the responsibility of protecting our most vulnerable citizens, our children. We do this work with compassion, with determination, and a deep sense of duty, but we never do it alone. We depend on our school system, who reports most of our reports. We depend on family resources. We also, um, depend on our churches and our community to help us protect the children. But I want you to know that the support of this Board of Commissioners has been unwavering. Whether through policy, funding, or partnership, your commitment to child welfare has strengthened our efforts and made it possible for our staff to respond to families in crisis, offer critical prevention services, and build bridges towards safety and healing. On behalf of every social worker at the Department of Social Services, caseworker, and child in our care, I want to say thank you. As we present our proclamation of child abuse prevention, we ask that you read it aloud and formally accept it, not as a symbolic gesture, but as a reaffirmation of our shared dedication in this county to the well-being of our children. Together, we can continue to raise awareness, support families, and build a community where every child is safe, loved, and given the opportunity to thrive. We want to say thank you for your leadership and for standing with us in this essential work.
Thank you. And you actually hit each of the bullet points in the proclamation of the resolution.
I hit, I hit some of them, not all of them, but I did hit some of them.
This is actually on our agendas before you, Commissioners, regarding the proclamation for Child Abuse Month. What is the will of the board?
Motion we approve a proclamation.
You got a motion and a second, any discussion? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'll call a question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed likewise? Now, thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioners, next is 4111, National Day Prayer Proclamation. Like to recognize Vice Chairman Alan Tony at this time.
Uh, it's something that comes up every, every year, and I'll read-
There's something that comes up every year, and I'll read the proclamation. And whereas from the earliest days of our country's history, people have turned to Almighty God for help and guidance. And whereas in times of national crisis, when the country is striving to strengthen the foundations of peace and security, citizens stand in special need of divine support. And whereas the Congress, by a joint resolution approved on April 17, 1952, has provided that the President shall set aside and proclaim a suitable day each year other than a Sunday as National Day of Prayer, on which the people of the United States may turn to God in prayer and meditation. And whereas the 1st Thursday of May has been designated by the Congress of the United States as the National Day of Prayer. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners recognize that distinction. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioner recognizes the need for our citizens to join in this prayer effort. And now therefore be it hereby resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners encourages Rutherford County citizens to unite in prayer on May 1, 2025. And I make this in a form of a motion.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have a motion? Thank you. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Here now to call a question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed likewise? Thank you. Congratulations. Commissioners, next item is 4... That's correct. 4101, this appointment to the Social Services Board. Like to recognize Hazel Hanes.
Thank you, sir. There is a vacancy on the Social Services Board due to a resignation. The position has been advertised and applications have been accepted. We did receive three applications for appointments. I think each of you have a copy of those. You may wish to make an appointment at this time since the applications have been received.
Commissioners, three applicants, and looking for an appointment. Is there a motion or appointments?
Make a motion for Sidney Pellegrini.
We got a motion, need a second.
I'll take it.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Here now to call a question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed likewise? Carrie. Thank you. Commissioners, next items, 4100, appointments to the Forest City Board of Planning and Adjustment. Like to recognize our Clerk to the Board, Hazel Hanes.
There are presently two vacancies on the Forest City Board of Planning and Adjustment representing the extraterritorial jurisdiction. The appointments of these vacancies are made by the Board of Commissioners upon the recommendation of Forest City Town Board of Commissioners. Mr. Charles Flack has applied for appointment, and the Forest City Town Board did vote to recommend Mr. Flack. Another applicant has also applied for the second position that's available, but the recommendation for the second position will not be on the Forest City Town Council's agenda until April 21st. So you may want to consider making the appointment of Mr. Flack if you so choose.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Make a motion to appoint Chuck Flack.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we like to have a second, please?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Here now to call a question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed likewise? Carrie, thank you. Appointment to the Transit Advisory Board is next. This is 4098. Like to recognize Hazel Hanes.
Thank you.
For tonight.
A retirement created a vacancy on the Transit Advisory Board, and this vacancy must be filled by a social services employee who is involved in Medicaid transportation. Ms. Susan Epley, who meets the criteria for that position, has applied to serve, so you may want to consider that appointment.
Thank you, Ms. Hanes. Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
I make a motion to appoint Susan Epley.
Thank you, Commissioner. Got a motion and a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Here now to call a question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed likewise? 4102, appointment to Partners Behavioral Health Management Board. Catch up here. Like to recognize again Hazel Hanes. Hazel.
June 30, 2025, a vacancy will occur on the Partners Behavioral Health Management Board because County Manager Garrison, who has served two consecutive terms, two consecutive three-year terms, will not be eligible for a reappointment until there's at least a one-year lapse. They do have term limits on that board, so you may wish to advertise the vacancy, accept the application, and make an appointment at a future meeting.
Thank you. Commissioners, this is before you right now. What's the will of the board?
I think this needs a Commissioner, and if I'd like to nominate Hunter Hayes if he'd be Hanes if he'd be willing to serve on it. It involves LME, MCO, and I think it's just important to have a Commissioner that can make those decisions or be a part of it since it's our money, if you would accept that nomination.
I'll accept it.
Need a second?
A second.
We've got a motion and a second. Actually, this is... Thank you, sir.
Very much.
This is now, this is a very important part of our service to the community, and especially how it ties in with funding, the special, which is the people that they serve, so thank you. Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? I'll call a question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed likewise? Carrie. Commissioners, next items, 4123, Management and Operations Agreement with the Heart of the Foothills. And at this time, I'd like to recognize our County Manager, Mr. Steve Harrison. Mr. Garrison.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm extremely excited to be able to present a proposal to you this afternoon. Proposed agreement with Heart of the Foothills Animal Services, presented for the purpose of providing animal control services, including operations of the animal control facility beginning July 1, 2025. This will be a three-year term. We have had a multitude of opportunities, Leadership Team and I, to meet with Ms. Parker, Director Parker, Parker and her team, and we are getting ready to open up the new facility. I want to thank Danny Cersei and his planning staff and for their hard work to get this facility up and running, and the timing could not be more perfect. So it's just great to be able to see we have this partnership that hopefully will get ready to happen with Heart of the Foothills, who have a phenomenal reputation in the community, as well as being able to introduce them to our new facility. So this afternoon, presenting to you a request that you would consider a proposed agreement. You have a copy of that that's been provided to you to review. I'm glad to answer any questions you have otherwise. Look forward, recommend a motion from the Commissioners and hopeful approval to allow us to move forward.
Are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners at this time?
Now, we'll make a motion. We authorize the County Manager and the County Attorney to negotiate terms of the agreement and authorize the County Manager, Finance Officer, County Attorney, Clerk to the Board, and other county officials to sign and execute all documents in support of this action.
Second.
I think we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think it's great.
Good news.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you. Y'all have been instrumental to this. Thank you for that.
Further discussion? We'll call a question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed likewise? Okay, we got it. Let's get her done. Commissioners, next items, 4117, on our agenda, Gov. Deal Auction for Rutherford County, property sold. Like to recognize Mr. Danny Cersei.
Good evening, Commissioners. As the county continues to review and scrutinize some of the property that we may be able to divest the county from and determine whether it's servicing in good purpose in support of our services, or if it's just a surplus. In February, you declared one surplus and authorized an online auction through Gov. Deals. Results of that auction is now in, and a Mr. Patrick Wembolia, if I'm not correctly, has won that auction the amount of $4,550. Tonight, we'd simply like to ask your consideration and acceptance of that winning auction, and if so, there is a resolution in the package.
Any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I'm reading this, and I'm noticing one type of graphical error. If the Board would amend the resolution that's in place by pointing out the third whereas clause, a high bid of $4,550 was submitted for the said parcel of real property by Patrick, what he said. Wembolia, I believe that is a different name on that third provision. If we could so amend the resolution, sir.
So the resolution would be amended, this before you, where the name on the third whereas will be replaced with the name that you just mentioned, is it the way I understand it? Okay. Commissioners, is that your understanding as well?
Yes.
That's it, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so now, we need to approve resolution, authorize the sale properties, approve the resolution as amended, authorizing the sale of properties. That'll correct the point of order, if I believe?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve the resolution as amended, authorizing the sale of properties.
Thank you.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? I need your back.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I'll call a question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed likewise? Okay.
Thank you.
Richard. Commissioners, next items, 4105, JCPC Funding Allocation for 2526. Oh, there you go. Hey, Paul. Didn't know you were here. You always come over. Welcome, Paul. Please tell us what's going on.
Thank you. Chairman King, Commissioners, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Williams, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak to you about the budget for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, the county funding plan. And if I could just take 30-second side note here, I do want to let the public know and the Commissioners know, Mr. Garrison has served a great job with the Partners Board, and we were really appreciative of his six years' time. So thank you very much, Mr. Garrison, and look forward to you working with the Partners Board, and good luck to you.
Thank you, sir.
So I'm here to present, again, Paul Holden with, I didn't mention that, Paul Holden with Partners. I serve as the Regional Director here in Rutherford County. You have before you the county funding plan for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. The thing I think I probably would want to say for the public is, we have available funds of $225,234. That funding source is from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety through their community programs. It doesn't come from Rutherford County. It comes from the state. And so each of the counties in the state of North Carolina have juvenile crime prevention councils, which are really agency and advocates for youth programming, and we work very closely with the Department of Juvenile Justice. I will tell you that the number of offenses for juveniles in Rutherford County has gone down quite precipitously in the last couple of years, and so referrals to providers are down too, because we don't have as many youth that we're working with. So I want to tell you, that's a very positive note and a good thing to happen. Before you, you have our county budget plan. For what you should know is that in the administrative category and in Project Challenge, we raised their amount just a little bit this year. I think the biggest thing for you to know is if you look down this budget currently, we've only allocated for $158,000 at the moment, with just below that, you see an amount of unallocated funds of $66,274. I can tell you the reason for that. Going back three, four years, when Raise the Age was the law in the state of North Carolina, I think there was a belief that juvenile justice was going to get overrun by 17- and 18-year-olds that were going to be referred for services. That hasn't happened, and then the legislature has changed that law a little bit so that we don't have near the number of 17- and 18-year-olds. Actually, it's really kind of diminished that. So in this county, we had two different programs that were doing many of the same services for restitution and restoration, you know, where you repay and you also work public service in the community. Project Challenge and then also Vocational Directions. So this year, we were faced with a decision that was kind of important. The state didn't want us to have two programs that were doing the same thing. So we had a lot of robust discussion and kind of came down on the fact that Project Challenge had been ably serving Rutherford County for a number of years here. And so the Allocation Committee and then subsequently JCPC selected Project Challenge to be our restitution program. So currently, I have $66,000 that we're looking for other providers. So a request for proposal just went out last Thursday to try and see if we can't get a mental health provider in this community to help us work with some of our kids. We don't have as many mental health providers in this community, so it's kind of tough, but we're working hard at it. And so that's pretty much what we're looking at, so we are here to ask for approval of our county funding plan.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners at this time? This is any suggested action before you? This time, look for the will of the board for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the funding requested as presented by JPC.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Thank you, Commissioner. Any discussion?
Thank you for serving.
Here now to call a question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed likewise? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're now on to the budget. 416, Budget Amendments for April 2025. Like to recognize our Finance Director, Director Roach.
Good evening. There's several budget amendments for your consideration this evening. The first are some donations received for the jail support and reunification program. The next is an HVAC system at our Rutherford Center. Veterans, this is appropriating the donations that they've received year-to-date. ICC has requested funds from their college reserve program for the HVAC and to diagnose a building problem at the foundation that's causing leaking. The next item is the contribution to DSS that offsets the next few items in the DSS fund. Foster care, 4E, and kinship, various programs are funded at 50/50 or 80/20, and then that difference from county funds is $319,000. Disaster funding that we received due to Helene, disaster rental assistance, we got several additional allocations for an additional $73,000. They're doing a reduction for the adult essential services because we've not utilized those funds, so they'll reallocate those to another county. The next item is that appropriation coming from the College Capital Reserve for the HVAC and the diagnosis. E911, this is to appropriate some funds for their capital to replace their consoles if we're able to get everything squared away by fiscal year-end. The next item, and the last one, is for the dozer or an excavator at the solid waste, based upon the additional tipping fees we have received at the landfill thanks to Helene. Then we're requesting another equipment replacement.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Are any trainings on that excavator going to be done, Mr. Garrison?
Commissioners, this is before you. Two of the amendments were part of, I mentioned during the budget amendment that you just did, but after consulting with our attorney and upon my recommendation, he agreed with me. And please tell us about this.
Helene is a project that when we initially started, we were hopeful that we would be finished with this project within a six-month period. We are not. We're actually asking for consideration for you all to approve the additional funds to do the Second Broad River, the debris removal. So this project is likely, we'll still get the water done late June, mid-July, the latest is our goal. But this will reallocate the funds for right-of-way disposal, the waterway, the land use agreements as we currently have them, our emergency protective measures, our rail trail debris removal, and our various county properties. If they're not covered by county, by the insurance, then those items will be claimed. And with any project, then you're also eligible for up to 5% for FEMA Category Z costs, and so those items are presented for your consideration. We have been working closely with our FEMA person. She'll be back this Wednesday to go through and work on another debris reimbursement.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions at this time?
Yeah, does this have any impact on the PP, the private property debris removal?
This does not. This just does the road right-of-ways and the waterways. There is a request currently standing with North Carolina Emergency Management for PPDR, and we're supposed to hear back in the next few days, we're hopeful.
So on the issues that was spoken about tonight, we're supposed to hear some resolution on that, possibly this week?
We're hoping to hear this week, next week at the latest. So if I can get a couple of those public comment forms, please, so that when and if we do hear back, then I can make appropriate contacts.
Correct.
If I can add additional context to that, I want to thank Scott Carpenter. He actually did a...
If I can add additional context to that, I want to thank Scott Carpenter, he actually did a pretty lengthy story on this several weeks ago, and thank you Scott. If you want to go back and reference that prior edition of the Daily Courier, that was pretty well covered in that. We have started this process back in late February. The challenge for the county has been is that we weren't initially tied to the Army Corps of Engineers when they first started doing work in Chimera, Rock Lake, Lord, and some of our neighboring counties. We were using SDR and I think we have some folks that are here with us this evening, thank you for being here. I'm sure you didn't think it's going to last this long, so I hope you got a hotel room because we need yourselves taxed, thank you. But I think for us, the journey now, it's the shift to try to do PPDR, that's private property debris removal, started in late February. The challenge was is that we were not initially originally tied to the Army Corps, so that required a mission statement. We actually had the mission statement in there originally, I'll take fault for that, we ended up taking it out because we were getting inquiries from a lot of the secondary companies. County, we don't do contracts with subcontractors, it has to be the primary contractors. Primary contractors that are listed through the state's procurement process are noted, that's where SDR came from. They were on the state's approved procurement list, so we selected them and phenomenal job. I think so far today, we have exceeded nine hundred something thousand dollar, or cubic yards.
Nine hundred thousand cubic yards.
Nine hundred thousand dollars, or feels like that too, actually, it's probably less. Nine hundred cubic yards, probably more than any county or all of the counties combined in West North Carolina. I think that was a wise decision in the beginning to use SDR and we appreciate that partnership because I think they were able to mobilize quicker, get on the ground faster and use a lot of local subcontractors as well here, so we do appreciate that. It's still ongoing, we're trying to wind that down, but it is still ongoing. Now, the shift from them to go to Army Corps required a new mission statement, so we had that put in late February. And then from that point, we've been talking to Army Corps, I've already forgotten the gentleman's name, Mark.
Mark Cardwell.
Cardwell, thank you. And then also too, with Joe Stanton, with North Carolina Department of Public Safety as well as Emergency Management and some other folks through their office since that time, going back and forth. We really just want to see what it's going to take to get this out and rolling in the county. It's an assessment process that they wanted to go through and do an assessment first to determine whether or not they could roll the program out. It is a little bit late in the game for them, for the Army Corps, so that's what we've been waiting on. Did talk to Joe Stanton with North Carolina Department of Public Safety on Friday and as Paul, I believe, has spoke to another gentleman from that office today. We keep pressing, just want to know what the status is, so as of right now, we're still being told that they're still considering it. I think part of the challenge is that these guys are so successful in doing the debris removal, I think they have to really do a full assessment of the whole county as a whole to determine whether or not they're going to roll the program out for Army Corps. Part of the challenge too is that they cannot do debris removal, I'm going to wire this down a little bit because it's not my area of expertise. I do know that they can only do debris removal for those properties that are in the immediate vicinity of the home or improved properties around the house, which could include driveway, but primarily that area around your house. It's not going to take, remove debris from those areas that may be close to or maybe in that lot beside your house and the woods behind your house, all of those are not going to be qualifying areas that they can go into and remove debris. So I think that's part of the challenge too, it's only that debris that they can define is still within the immediate vicinity or proximity of the place where you live, so that's creating challenges as well. Then they have to go through a vetting process of applications to be submitted by those that have an interest in wanting to participate in the program. Some things they have to show such as insurance that denied it or that it's not eligible under their homeowner's insurance and some other qualifying factors that sometimes can be a little daunting, but anyway, we are trying. We're waiting to hopefully hear back in the next day or two, as soon as we hear back from Mr. Stanton or from one of the folks from Army Corps, then that'll be great. We do know, we do appreciate all the hard work that the subcontractors are doing, working with the Army Corps. Part of the challenge is that when they talk to some of the citizens in our county, they identify themselves as Army Corps, not the name of the company that they're actually working for, and I think that's where some of the miscommunications have occurred. Glad to answer any more questions you may have about that. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. And SDR, thank you for spending the night with us, we respect that. Thank you for the work you've been doing in our community. It's really welcome to see that you're using qualified local talent, which keeps the funding in our community as well for those folks and we look forward to continuing to work with you on these other projects. Commissioners, there's a suggestive action before you right now. I would ask you to take a look at that and provide me your will.
Just send here to the board.
Yep.
The Board's requested to adopt the attached grant project ordinance and above and approve the attached budget amendment to establish a budget for projects and related to the hurricane disaster response as presented.
Thank you. There's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion second, any discussion? Commissioners, if you don't mind, I do need, want to make one point here. This brings a total investment in the public citizen grants to forty-seven million, two hundred and fifty dollars, or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay, and where's this money coming from?
This money will be reimbursed from FEMA, but at the current time, we will have to, we'll have to utilize fund balance to leverage these funds.
You're financing this with fund balance, forty-seven million, two hundred and fifty thousand, okay. That's what I thought, just want to make sure it's clear. Okay, we have a motion second, we're still in discussion? Hearing and to call a question, all in favor raise your right hand, any opposed likewise? Thank you. Commissioners, next item is four one two zero. State cash, state cash flow loans for disaster response activities. Like to recognize our Finance Director, Director Roach.
In response to Helene, the state legislature appropriated a hundred million dollars in order to help those western North Carolina counties to help with their cash flow issues. Based upon the damage inventory workbooks that were available mid-February, then those funds were portioned out to the respective towns and counties and our portion was one point eight million dollars. There's a resolution there for your consideration and a loan agreement. What we'll do is, we can hold the funds until such time FEMA reimburses us and then we have to pay it back. There's a payment plan in there, but there's also legislative consideration for maybe even a forgiveness of this, so that counties and cities can use those, use those funds for things that FEMA did or didn't cover. So at this point in time, we would request the Board to approve these resolutions and we pull down these funds and put them in a bank account until we get such further guidance as to their utilization.
Thank you, are there any questions from the Board?
Is there any cost associated with accessing these funds?
No, it's an interest-free loan and you actually hold the funds for the first year with a dollar payment due at the anniversary date. The payments thereafter are ten percent the second year, twenty, then thirty, then forty and then the balance due in twenty twenty-nine or at such time FEMA fully reimburses the county. There is no guidance currently as to the investment earnings, as to whether or not they're restricted for the same purpose. So most of the time when there's no consideration or guidance as to that, then it winds up being unrestricted.
I make a motion we adopt resolution.
Second.
We got a motion second, now we're in discussion, any discussion among the Board of Commissioners? If we don't apply, we don't get?
Correct.
I think we got to go for it.
And then also the rumors through my contacts that this may be forgiven to certain counties?
Yes, one side of the legislature is discussing forgiveness, the other side not currently, but there's hope.
Okay, thank you, any further discussion?
Might need your excavator.
Hearing, hearing and to call a question, all in favor raise your right hand, any opposed likewise, and Carrie's, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, next item is four one one eight, resolution to recognize, I'm sorry, approving a Rutherford County Official America two five zero NC committee. I'd like to recognize Mr. Dan Cersey, Dan, welcome.
Hello, Commissioners. Let's see, semi-quinsentennial is one of about four different phrases that describe the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, of which we'll be celebrating July fourth, twenty twenty-six, our country will be two hundred and fifty years old. North Carolina has incentivized counties across the state to be able to form a committee to help plan the celebration of such an event and they even are offering some grant funds to be able to do so. We have gotten Don Kason and our tourism crowd to start this effort at creating a planning committee. It's going to consist of a good cross-section of Rutherford Countyans, if that's such a word, and we're just excited to look forward to this plan. Tonight, you have a resolution in your package in consideration of these grant funds available to be able to form a committee and to start making plans accordingly. You got any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Are there any questions?
Because as long as they're not the other four ones, I apologize.
Are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners? The resolution before we was in your agenda packet and was online regarding the resolution, what's the will of the Board?
I make a motion we approve the resolution.
Second. Got a motion second, any discussion? Hearing and to call a question, all in favor raise your right hand, any opposed likewise?
Thank you very much.
Just real quick, this will be a special year for us next year because our courthouse also turns a hundred years old.
A hundred years old, wow, next year.
Big party.
Two zero two seven, Wampler Ains, I guess, service contract for the revaluation of commercial properties only. We're getting ready to go to reval again?
Yeah, we're looking in that direction, yes, sir.
I'd like to recognize Paul Bridges.
I'm fine, fine.
Mr. Bridges.
All right, good evening again, I'm Paul Bridges with Revenue Department here tonight on behalf of Revenue Director, Richard Lawson, who is out of town at a class. And we are seeking your approval of the service contract with Wampler Ains appraisal group to perform the twenty twenty-seven revaluation for the county's commercial real property.
Commissioners, contract's been in your pocket and it's before you, do you have any questions at this time regarding the contract?
Were these the same group that did the previous commercial evaluations?
Yes, they did the twenty twenty-three commercial only and then they did the twenty nineteen full measure and list, so they did everything in twenty nineteen. But we did residential land and buildings and house for twenty twenty-three. And we'll do that again, twenty seven.
Make a motion we approve the contract.
Second.
We got a motion in a second, thank you Commissioner, any discussion? Hearing and to call a question, all in favor raise your right hand, any opposed likewise, okay, Carrie's?
Thank you.
Next item is four one one four, goals update review, I'd like to recognize Mr. Tony from IPDC.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, thanks for having me tonight, Commissioners, thanks for having me tonight as well. Thanks just again for letting us do that, letting me be a part of your goal-setting, you know, kind of meetings. That was a lot of fun, we had some great conversation, we had some great discussion and kind of taking some time to write these up in a little bit more detail. And like I said, part of that key goal-setting was of course presenting it publicly. I will try to be quick as I know it is, it's starting to be a more good night than good evening at this point. Priorities, we came to five different priorities together as a group. One of those, of course, was the capacity impacts from Hurricane Helene. Just understanding about those, both revenue impacts and of course the economic impacts are on our county. The clarity in the budget, providing information on funding sources, just, we're transparent now, always just working towards being better, being the best we can be. School safety, emergency services and economic development. This is the SWOT analysis, I'm not going to read this, I just wanted to make sure. It's turned out a little smaller than I thought it would, I apologize, not going to read this to you tonight. Please, in your leisure, read that, so you guys have some really good feedback there and some really good discussion and it really came together in these goals. So the goal one, of course, is, I believe from Chairman King, which was determine the overall impact of Helene and on the economic health of Rutherford County. Our governing body goal kind of speaks for itself there, there's two kind of key components of this. The first one is, of course, we need to understand what the potential revenue impacts that this is going to be. This is, of course, going to show up in your budget and revenue plus, Mr. Garrison will be providing that report to you guys in due time with, along with kind of the budget message. The other kind of side of this is, of course, what's the actual kind of wages, employment, what's that long-term impact look like? And this is something we need to be thinking very seriously about, very strategically about, because that's going to impact that other first number, right, the revenue number. So one thing we recommend here is, of course, for economic development, tourism to work together, of course, with Department, North Carolina Department of Commerce, kind of analyze these numbers, do some projections, provide that information to you guys. It's not easy when you're doing economic projections, I do them a decent amount in my job day-to-day. Pretty challenging, but it's something that with Commerce and with some folks that they have, they are working on this. I think Golden Leaf's doing a little bit of this as well right now, there's some opportunities here. Goal two is, of course, provide, improving clarity and transparency in the budgeting process, please, Commissioner Hulk's primary goal. We want to provide an easy-to-read and understandable report, right, we want something clear, using good visuals, that kind of thing. The first recommendation I have on here is, we really need to review current finance staff capacity and determine finance staff capacity needs. One of the major things to understand is, when you're looking at staff, ninety percent or more of their time, ninety, ninety-five percent of their time is on existing programming. So anytime we add programming, we need to understand really what that capacity needs are going to be. Of course, this can look like any number of things, formal inquiries, conversations with Director Roach or, you know, with Mr. Garrison or the like. There's a lot of options available to you, but you do need to understand what those, what those capacity constraints are and what those capacity needs are going to be long-term, because this is work, right, you know, let's, let's not cut you off, it is work. It is additional time, additional staff hours, right, and then, of course, after the fact. We want to provide an annual financial report, so occasionally revenue expenditures and county goals and it should be an image-based document, right, we don't want something with walls of text, we want images that are easy to, easy to understand, graphs, charts, so on and so forth. Like I said, we don't want to, we don't want to burn out anybody, we don't want to overwork anyone, I know Director Roach works very diligently and very, very hard for the community. All right, school safety, I believe this was Commissioner Haynes' goal, one of the biggest, two big portions of this one was, of course, Mr. Haynes was going to work within the community to create that full-time, that task force for full-time school resource officers at every single school. Mr. Haynes volunteered to take this on, so no staff work here, it's a Commissioner, Commissioner work here to kind of set up these meetings, get these started, get these off the ground. I have those, you know, really July twenty twenty-five, I think, was the date we start, we talked about, could have been sooner. I, I'll be honest, I, I was thinking like right after the fiscal year perhaps, but, you know, happy to change that based upon your, your direction. And of course, Rutherford County Commissioner is also committed to really delineating those positions in that budget for the, for fiscal year twenty-six, if I remember correctly, and that should be in the budget, this year's budget. Finally, we're getting into emergency services infrastructure, this was Commissioner Benfield's goal. This was a fantastic goal about that new emergency management facility, we kind of talked about what Helene showed us in those needs there. Let's, let's determine that feasibility, let's continue working on that partnership with, with the town of Spandell potentially on the construction of that new facility. After that, let's get into funding sources and funding opportunities, right, we want to, I always tell folks, we want to stretch the dollars as far as we can. So let's, let's leverage every dollar we can, especially with a focus on western North Carolina and of course disaster recovery. And then, of course, you have to do all your fun stuff like that Mr. Cersey does with procuring an architect, you have to design a facility, you have to go out for construction bidding and all that good stuff. Finally, economic development, that was Special Chairman Tony's goal. This is developing an industrial shale building, it's kind of what we landed on here, right at the end, right at the end of the meet, and I was worried about us getting out on time. You know, we want to work with the EDC in partnership to determine that site of that new shale building, determining the specifications. Does it need to be part of a new industrial park, let's have this, let's figure this out. And we want to determine funding sources, partnerships, of course, you have to have utilities, so finding the right partners for utilities is really, really key for this. And then we want to get in for current procurement, design and construction, you notice I put twenty-four months there. Always subject to change, it's always a little fluid, it's always a little fluid. I know I sped through those, y'all have any questions or comments for me? I do have my email on there, if you think of something after the fact.
You did great, but are there any comments or anything from the Board of Commissioners? It was, and I, I'm going to speak to the Board. It was one of the first times that we all four got a chance to sit down together as the new Board. It was insightful, we learned from each other and we also, and I personally, you thought about something I hadn't thought about before and, and so it was a great opportunity for us to come together and, and these goals, I don't say they're fluid, now they're going to change, but this is always a fluid process, because things will come up that we will see as, as a new priority or priority that has. priority or priority that has, has come. So, I appreciate that. There's, there's no recommended action, and then we have discussion, but are there any other questions from the Board? Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to come back next year and do it again.
Okay, we appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, we're, the next item on our agenda is closed session under Attorney Client NC GS 14331181183. We actually will hold that meeting in here. This will be members of the Board of Commissioners, our county attorney, our county manager, and our clerk. We're going to ask our, the rest of our guests, if you may go home, or you just wait in the parking lot, we'll be out there in a few minutes. There will be no action taken after closed session, so, thank you. At this time, we'll look for the Board, a motion to go into closed session, as indicated.
Don't move.